All right, everybody, why don't we go ahead and get started? We're going to call this meeting, this work session, I should say, of the Washington County School District Board of Trustees to order this special work session on capital projects at the request of trustee Church and Dr. Nicolette. So we're happy to have this. We'll start with our call to order by our clerk, Dr. Nicolette. I mean, our roll call, I mean, sorry.
Jeff Church. Ellen Minneto. Elaine Nicolette here. Joe Rodriguez. Beth Smith.
Yeah.
Angela Taylor.
I'm here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, and of course, our student trustee is in class as she should be. So we're going to go ahead with our pledge. Let's see, Mr. Circe, since you're sitting right here in front of us, why don't we have you go ahead and lead us in the pledge?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is a, like I said, a special work session of the Washington County School District Board of Trustees, and we will, let's see, we're going to start with actually Agenda Item 2.01, which is our only Agenda Item. Comprehensive overview of the Facilities Management and Capital Projects Department. This will include past, present, and future new building construction projects to address overcrowding needs, repair and infrastructure projects, yeah, overcrowding needs, repair and infrastructure projects to address school buildings and district buildings in need of repair. This is for possible action, and this is again, at the request of our two trustees, which is actually great to dive into this because so many of our trustees who are here today were not here when WC-1 first passed, or maybe were here but not at this diocese, right, and they're, actually, I think I'm the only one who was here when it was passed. Ooh, I don't know if that makes me old or what, but anyway. Oh, you were here, okay, thank you, Dr. Di. When WC-1 was passed in 2016, and that's what provided the capital that is being utilized for new buildings, infrastructure repair, meeting the overcrowding needs and so on for school facilities. And so this is a good background to talk about kind of how we got to, how we got it, how we got here, what the future looks like and so on, and then to have some discussion. So, Mr. Circe, I don't, you weren't quite here in 2016, I don't believe. Oh, you, oh, yeah, you were here, I said, you just weren't in this position. No, okay, there you go, okay, that was Joe Gabica. Okay, but you were here, so you know all about that, so, and then we have several members of the staff who are here as well to chime in if necessary as we go along. So thank you, I know this has been a project for staff to put together, but I do think it's really important to bring everybody up to speed and then as we look forward together. So, that being said, Mr. Circe, I will turn it over to you.
Excellent, thank you President Taylor for that introduction. Good morning, everyone, my name's Adam Circe, for the record, I'm the Chief Facilities Management Officer for the school district. And I did put together a significant presentation this morning, it's a comprehensive overview of capital projects. So the intent is to elicit a conversation amongst the trustees and to better inform about where we've been, what we've accomplished, and where we might be headed. So I tried to break this presentation up into some bite-sized portions rather than me talking for too excessively long amount of time. Really, it's where we've been pre-2016 WC-1, you know, what we've accomplished since that time to present day, and then more about where we think we might be headed into the future. So, you know, again, feel free to interrupt me if I'm going too fast, if you want to talk a little bit deeper on a given slide, there's a lot of information behind each and every one of them. I will try to schedule some of these breaks for conversation and discussion and save time at the end, of course. So with that, we'll just dive right in. We do go back to the beginning of time, this is a snapshot here of some required reading, I think, for all trustees or capital projects members. If you haven't found this document before, it's really neat, it talks about all of our schools through 2012, there's some new ones since then, the document needs to be updated, but it's got some cool history on the district itself and past superintendents. But this slide really is just to set the stage, it's a gigantic district, as everyone understands, over 100 facilities. When you hear me refer to Facilities Management Department, that's inclusive of not only capital projects, but also maintenance and housekeeping and our regulated systems and asset management team that really all work together to maintain our facilities. Capital Projects is just a division within the department. And then, you know, trying to have some fun, I have some nicknames, I want this morning to be upbeat, and fun facts, I enjoy, and I couldn't come up with one better than the size of the county, which is 18% larger than the state of Connecticut. In case you ever needed to win a bet on that. We also manage all of, so all of the school districts' facilities and real property assets, right? We've got non-academic facilities as well as school facilities, we manage essentially in the same manner that we manage our school facilities. So, the central administration complex, you can see captioned on the left, or on the right, rather, opened in 1963. So, just so we're in sync with our mental math, that would be approaching its 60th birthday. We talked about feeling old earlier, there's going to be a few, maybe hitting a little too close-to-home references for our 40 and 50 and 60-year-olds in the audience, but that's just a brief listing of what, there's a lot, a lot of schools and a lot of facilities out there, including properties that we own with the intention of future schools that we own and are responsible for as well. So I tried to chunk this up into some historical eras, if you will, I think this spans more than one era, but it fell neatly into the timeline, 40 years, 48 to 88, the Washington County School District constructed and opened 53 new schools. And you can see a nearly comprehensive overview of those schools on the left, really a period of time dominated by what, again, with the nicknames, we like to refer to them as the baby boomer elementary school design types, exemplified by the Jesse Beck Elementary School, these schools you are all familiar with, but also you can see during this time period, we built five middle schools of a wing-type nature, Dilworth, Vaughn, Spark, Swope, et cetera, and many others as well. A lot of building activity during that time period, this was quite some time ago, and we, these schools are going to be featuring prominently later in the presentation. So, yada yada, through 40 years of WCSD facilities, we're now into the 1989 to 2009 period where we saw unprecedented enrollment growth throughout that period. You can see the average annual enrollment growth greater than previous or since, the school district opened 34 new schools during that 20-year span, and still, as we will learn later, failed to keep up with demand. This era was really characterized by the, what we call pinwheel elementary schools, so think Brown, Collin Ranch, Hidden Valley, those types of schools, our courtyard middle schools, as you can see there, and then of course, several new high schools during this time period. As I mentioned, we struggled to a degree to keep up with demand. Despite our resources, the voter-approved rollover bond passed in November 2002 allowed us to complete a tremendous amount of revitalization programs. Many of you are familiar primarily with those baby boomer elementary schools, they got what we called a fit and finish upgrade, Wi-Fi, windows, carpet, technology, things of that nature that are more of a revitalization level of scope. We did continue with our capital renewal program, but this era saw a real explosion or proliferation of portable classrooms and other deferred maintenance that we slowly fell further and further behind. I note the first records of the multi-track year-round schedule at our elementary school started right around the 2000, 2001 school year, and in 2012, that bond measure actually expired with no other significant funding source. So as these early oughts, or the early 2000s, were continuing, the school district was well aware of that financial transition and was working with our legislative leaders to try and come up with an additional solution or resource to meet the needs of the community. So, these are kind of a snapshot of some of those efforts. If you've lived in the community or been engaged with the public sector, you're probably familiar with some or all of these. Lot of work went into these, you can see 2000, 2007, 2008, WCSD-1 ballot question was unsuccessful with Washington County voters. In 2013, the legislature sent a potential tax increase or revenue increase back to the county commission for decision, where it expired by limitation or failed as well. Meanwhile, as I said, the growth continued, the Great Recession occurred during this time period, however, the private sector rebounded, enrollment rebounded, the public sector did not. We saw, as I mentioned, a proliferation of portables, the inability to acquire new properties to meet the needs of future growth, staff leaving because of funding uncertainty in the capital projects department, a reduction in investment into our existing schools, just leading to greater and greater deferred maintenance backlog, and a resumption of multi-track year-round schedules at our elementary schools. So, this was all in the lead-up to the 2015 AB-411, which turned into ultimately the 2016 WC-1 ballot measure. Now, as a part of that, AB-411, the Public Schools Overcrowding and Repair Needs Committee, that's an acronym, PSORN, was created to help guide the local community and determine the most appropriate, if necessary, the most appropriate revenue stream for school district capital projects. So this was a citizen-led committee who met in a public fashion with prescribed membership over a period of time. They requested copious information from the school district to assess the need, assess options related to a potential solution, and then ultimately recommended a sales tax-based revenue solution to the Washington County Commission and was included in the 2016 ballot. We'll talk about the work of this committee repeatedly, but these are just a couple of snapshots from their working documents from 2016. You can see scenarios were analyzed, questions were asked, scope elements were struck, and then ultimately, as I said, culminating in the ballot measure itself with a variety of very specific languages. So specifically, this was the language that was included in the 2016 ballot measure, very specific language related to the upgrade and reconstruction of existing schools based on the prioritization of a citizen oversight panel. You can see up above that this tax is to fund only capital projects of the Washington County School District for acquisition, construction, repair, and renovation, many specific school projects listed, as well as new school construction. I read that verbatim very, very intentionally because we do take it so seriously, the specific commitments that were made to the public as a part of this ballot measure, and the mandate that the public responded to us with in the form of that overwhelming approval rate. So that is pre-2016 WC-1, that's, what are we working on here? Mental math, friends, like 50 years of Washington County School District history, I'm going to take a breath and talk about what we've done from then until now. Any questions, though? Okay? So we've been busy since 2016. These are four really, really high-level bullet points about what this district has accomplished since 2016. Over 750 invested, those are actual encumbered investments into our community to date. The 10 new schools and the overcrowding relief impacts, I round it up to next school year because we all know there's a number of schools, projects that are in progress that are scheduled to open next school year, but pretty overwhelming, 10 new schools or significant expansions impacting, positively impacting approximately 63 other schools with some form of overcrowding relief just within the last five years. And then, not, last but not least, the establishment of the Capital Funding Protection Committee as a critical citizen oversight element for the use of these taxpayer funds, that we'll talk about that repeatedly as well. So this is a similar slide highlighting all of the specific schools that we've opened, but really, I just wanted to note the Nutrition Services Central Kitchen expansion has been completed since 2016, as well as multiple transportation yard expansions, also a purview of the Facilities and Capital Projects Department and a core, some core central service functions to the district. And then lastly, there are 192-plus million in capital renewal. These are our asset replacements within our schools, new carpet, new windows, new boilers, new roofs, investing in every single one of our schools has been impacted in some form or fashion in the last five years through this increased investment into our existing facilities. So talking about that capital renewal since 2016, this is one slide, but it represents arguably 90% of what the capital projects department actually does. When we talk about hundreds of discrete construction projects across active school campuses across our entire district, they might be $200,000 apiece or something like that, but they are particularly labor-intensive and particularly valuable to our individual schools. So these are a couple of snapshots of the biannual reports that we bring to the Capital Funding Protection Committee and the Board of Trustees in an effort to receive input and guidance and demonstrate our transparency and accountability. In fact, this afternoon, I think we've got six items on consent related stemming from these capital renewal investments, something like that, so a very, very, very active part of the capital projects department. You know, I wanted to note also the energy upgrades, another way that we've touched every single one of our schools through this program, but also really to note the $450 million of maintenance backlog, essentially. These are assets that have exceeded their useful lifespans, we talked about this last meeting, actually, not necessarily no longer functioning, but definitely on the immediate repair and replacement list. So that's our capital renewal program that we have really been successful on in the last five years and look forward to improving. Just a couple of highlights, then, I won't go through all of the new schools that we've constructed in the last five years, but I wanted to highlight a couple of these very specifically. As you are all familiar, the Swope Middle School expansion is underway, scheduled to open next school year, but this represents a project, you know, characterized, originally intended to provide overcrowding relief, as it will allow sixth graders to come up into middle school across their five feeder elementary schools, but it also represents a facility solution characterized by expansion and renovation, right? Obviously, this is an existing school, some 60 years old itself, that we're significantly renovating, variety of spaces, and then obviously expanding onto it as well. The next example of a similar nature is the O'Brien Middle School rebuild. This also was initiated because of overcrowding and growth needs in the North Valleys, however, it is, of course, characterized by the nature of reconstruction, right? We're going to be demolishing the existing school after we've rebuilt a brand-new school conforming with our modern educational facility standards. So this is an exciting project that's underway now. And lastly, as we're all familiar, the new Proctor-Hug High School, this also was initiated due to overcrowding and growth, primarily Spanish Springs High School and secondarily North Valleys High School will be relieved, our two most overcrowded current high schools will be relieved next school year to a significant degree with the opening of this school, but also because it will allow us to implement a significant renovation and reconstruction project at the current Proctor-Hug High School, turning that into the Debbie Smith CTE Academy. All exciting projects based on overcrowding relief, but demonstrating opportunities for the years to come. So, and then kind of put in a bookend on the post-WC-1 to present date era, I wanted to talk a little bit about the work of the Capital Funding Protection Committee. So to rewind back to that PSORN group, remember, they called for a citizen oversight committee to approve all of these WC-1-funded transactions separate from the Washington County School Board. This was modeled after one of those NRSs that's sort of Clark County School District-specific, I think this one says counties with populations greater than 700,000 or something like that, NRS 393096. But we followed that model and now have a committee made up of six elected officials across the region and five appointed committee members who are required to approve all of the funding expenditures before it even comes to the school board. This has established a system of transparency and accountability and a process that is reassuring to the community and to everyone that's involved in this program. I think it's very important to recognize the success that that represents, creating standard process of expectations and things of that nature has build, built communities' trust and respect over the last five years with the use of these funds. So the last slide on this one, a number of additional bullets here, I mentioned transparency and accountability often for a very specific reason, it's something that was demanded, it was written into the efforts of WC-1, and it's something that we take great pains in improving continuously on. There's a whole laundry list of items that we have done and continue to do and have enhanced over the last five years in many instances at the requests of the board and of the Capital Funding Protection Committee. But again, I feel that it not only builds community trust and respect, it also makes our solutions better, you know, and that's why I've been so excited about this opportunity today, to present this, to have a conversation with others, ask challenging questions.
Absolutely, trustee Church? Yeah, I'm sorry, let me just, we're in the work session, so really, if someone has a question, just turn your mic on and go ahead, we don't have to be as formal as in a sort of a meeting.
Sure, yeah, and you said, "Go ahead and interrupt," so.
Yeah, this is a good time, you bet.
Yeah, and so for the record, too, the opinions I'm going to give are, questions are mine, and there's some handouts I've given for the public record and for my fellow trustees, but I just want to, and by the way, I am wearing my San Diego Padre tie, so I'm hoping I get the sympathy vote from people. I just noticed the, you said, bi-monthly meetings of the Capital Funding Protection Committee, that means twice a month?
Yeah, I even Googled it, I always get mixed up, bi-monthly, is that every other month or twice a month? It's every other month, so.
Okay, no, no gotcha here, but yeah, first of all, I interpreted it to mean twice a month, but looking at the agenda, they've only met three times in 2021, three times in 2020, and looking at some of the minutes, generally the meetings last about 90 minutes, one to two hours. So, I just, not a gotcha, I'm sorry, but I don't think that's accurate, so I don't know if you want to comment on that or?
I mean, just to be clear, the Capital Funding Protection Committee is scheduled to meet the first Thursday of every even-numbered month, so every other month, and occasionally, if the agenda doesn't warrant, we have canceled the meetings, but anytime there is funding allocation requested or a mandatory reporting, we meet and must have a quorum and take formal action, and then of course, all of their recommendations must also be approved by the Board of Trustees.
Okay, and yeah, just, again, I'm not trying to play gotcha, but 2018, they met four times, 2019, they met five times, one, two, three, four, five, 2024 times, so, and then 2021, three times. So I, to me, it's more like quarterly, I think would be more accurate historically, but anyway, I've got my, got my point, thank you.
If I may, because I think it's, I think it's important that we know, you know, that it's, it's accurate, right? And so if I may, I think that if we're three for, usually, that's about six a year, right? If it's every other month, and then, you know, maybe around the holidays or something, you might miss one, so I think five to six a year, so it creates some context for what trustee Church is saying, so it's not as far off as it seems, it wouldn't be more, it would never, it wouldn't unless necessary, it wouldn't typically be more than six times a year, and I do think 2020 may get a little bit of a pass, you know, with COVID, so I don't think it's as far, I think that's certainly noteworthy, trustee Church, so I don't want to say that it isn't, because I do think that is certainly noteworthy, but I do want to say that contextually, as compared to five or six times a year, it's really not that far off.
I just got it under accurate, the main thing was that we don't have the public thinking or the board thinking that we meet twice a month as a committee, that committee, not really.
Yeah, but I do think it was still noteworthy, just contextually, it's just not as far off, because we do want to be accurate, and if we're, if we sound we're meeting, we want to be pretty close to that, so, I get that. Trustee, trustee Smith? Thank you, trustee Church.
And I am all for accuracy, so our good friends at the Oxford Dictionary do define bi-monthly as meaning both twice a month or every two months.
I was just going to say that.
So, just wording accuracy is incredibly important as part of the promise that we make to our community, and it appears that everyone is right on this definition.
I was actually going to say that, but I thought, because I've actually had to look it up before, that's the only reason why I knew that, because I had to look at it, but that was a few years ago, I'm like, maybe they changed it, so, but thank you, now we're not, so we're good, either way, another reason why clarifying what that means is important, because it could be either way.
There's a lot of information on this slide, it's important, you know, the community receives information in a variety of different ways, so we can say it's all on the website, go find it, we take it a number of steps further, we have public meetings, we issue quarterly reports, we publish this document and that document, long-term plans, annual plans, all of it is on that slide, it's just a snapshot of what we do to try and make sure that everybody is fully informed and that the appropriate parties are being consulted as we're developing these programs. So that's, this was actually the end of the section, so good time for a little discussion, but we're about halfway through and we're really only just getting into the good stuff.
Okay, we'll pause for a minute, Ben, go ahead, jump on in.
I have a clarification, so the SORN committee, does it still function?
PSORN?
PSORN, thank you, PSORN.
PSORN, I like that.
Another acronym, yay.
They actually, yeah, they pronounce the first letter, it's tricky, no, they do not, they were disbanded once they reached their conclusion, which was the ballot measure recommendation for the 2016 measure.
That's a good question as well, I think also just for everybody's knowledge, again, who may not have been here, in terms of the Capital Funding Protection Committee, any of the recommendations that come from staff go to the Capital Funding Protection Committee, Capital Funding Protection Committee, you know, they do, they do their work, they do what they do, it comes to the board. If the board does not, and this is really unique, which I think why it's important to point it out, if the board does not approve that recommendation from the Capital Funding Protection Committee, then it goes back to the Capital Funding Protection Committee with, with an explanation as to why it was not approved. There's no other time as a board that we have to put on public record why we approved or didn't approve something, but in this case, it's just another level of, let's say for an example, if the Capital Funding Protection Committee says, "We're going to spend this $50 million on this middle school," and we say, "No, we're going to spend $60 million," or whatever, we have to go back, it goes back, because we have not approved their recommendation, it goes, it doesn't just kill it with everything else, if we say no, it kills it here. In this case, it goes back to that committee, again, with another, with an explanation as to why it wasn't, why it wasn't approved, and I think that's really noteworthy, because that suggests a really high level of community involvement and accountability from us, if we aren't, if we aren't supportive of what this, this, this community-driven group is, so. Trustee Church?
Thank you very much. I don't have a number on my slides, I'm probably not looking at the right place, but it's the picture of the PSORN committee, entitled Capital Projects Pre-2016, Facilities Management Department, and it's, looks like they're in a kind of a small room, there you go, you're good. I want to point out, I was involved in this back in the day, and I attended some of those meetings, and I think it's important, and you can Google this, it's on the record, it's, you'll still find it, you know, if you Google it or Bing it or whatever, that 781 million that you see three different places on that slide or more is extremely important because that's what the committee essentially came up with, that's what we need, and throughout every one of those meetings and the media, et cetera, the plan was initially presented as a nine-year bond issue or ballot measure. presented as a nine-year bond issue or ballot measure. And then, at the second of the last meeting, I, and again, I attended many of these, at the second of the last meeting, they decided that it was going to be forever to build these new schools. And then they canceled the last meeting, and that's all public record. So later on, I'm going to express some concerns or opinions about what happened back then. It's not a reflection on the school district in any way, shape, or form, but it is a reflection on the manner in which this went through. So I just wanted to point that out. That 781 million wasn't pulled out of thin air. It was the original plan from all the research for a bond measure for nine years that was going to sunset, and at the time, I was behind it. So I just wanted, since we're breaking on here, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Really, if I may, just to make sure it doesn't get lost, so the point is that it doesn't sunset, so that 781 million might continue on, because that's, I want to make sure your point on that is clear, Trustee.
Yeah, the math, the math was that it would generate 781 million, well, and now's probably a good time to talk about it. The math was that it would generate 781 million over nine years, and then it would sunset, and then we'd be on our own to decide what we're going to do in the future. And then at that last meeting, which did turn out to be the last meeting, the second of the last, they decided that it was going to be forever, meaning no sunset, which means it's no longer 781 million, now it's.
It's whatever turns out.
Infinity, infinity for money, strictly limited to building new schools. And that was a good time, in the handout that you'll see on the front page, and it's on the public record, there's an excellent article from the car dealers that talk about that, and that sales revenue has fallen half, approximately half of what they predicted at the time. So in spite of the booming Washoe County economy, that 781 million has failed to materialize, it's more like 48 million.
We've got a couple of slides.
Correction, correction, thank you.
We've got a couple of slides on the actual revenue stream and our CFO here.
So you want to hold that till we get to that piece?
Well, just one quick, I'll finish up the statement. It's the yearly revenue, not 781 million, but the yearly, the yearly revenue has been almost half of what was predicted. So that's just it, I just wanted to get that on the record at this point, thank you.
Dr. Nicolet, you had your level? Go ahead, Trustee Smith.
Thanks, I just have one thing, and that, the first part of this presentation is so fantastic from an informational standpoint. I would, I know that, of course, this is posted for the public, it's under board docs, but I would love to see this also posted somewhere else on our site, because it's so informative, and it really answers so many questions that I also talk with people about, about the histories of WC1, what led to it. So overall, I'm just commenting on the fact that this is extremely well-done in the first half, and I'd love to see if there was an opportunity to place this other places on our website, to answer common questions that I know people have about the history of this.
So are you suggesting maybe some kind of FAQ or something like that? That might be certainly something to consider if it will answer some questions, and it's, I mean, this is good information for me, because again, because I was here since then, so it's like, man, a lot of this stuff I just know, because I was just in the mix of it when it was being done, but, you know, that gives me a different perspective, right? And then the perspective might, more likely should be for those, not just new trustees, but people in the community that may be asking questions now as well. So maybe that's something to consider, look at some kind of, you know, we have the building site, you know, on their WCSD building, I think it is, right? Right, look, look at that segue right there for you. And so that might be a place to post, to post this. And then we'll get back, Trustee Church, not to, not to end what you were saying, we'll get back to the rest of that, because I think we'll ask our CFO to jump in on some of those numbers as well. Okay, everybody good? All right, thank you, let's go ahead.
Okay, well, moving forward, post-2016 WC1 renovation and reconstruction. So we're going to start off talking about our capital improvement plan, sometimes you'll hear me refer to that as our CIP, and our priorities. When we talk about our CIP, I kind of summarize it into three main pillars. And we're going to kind of try and structure the conversation around those three pillars. Asset renewal, okay? That's going to be your capital renewal, the flooring, the roofing, the windows, the boilers, the capacity demands, that's commonly characterized by building new schools, but it's much more complex and nuanced than just that. So capacity demands, and then the third leg of that stool is our core school investments, which also can take on a variety of forms. So this is just a snapshot from our current FY '22 to '26 five-year CIP, which was approved back in April 2020 by the board. You can, if you can read that, you can see, it is, it consists of projects that can be categorized within those three aspects of our program. But before we can talk about the priorities of the program, we always need to analyze the resources with which we have to deliver this program. So that's why we work closely with the Business and Finance Office to model this and ensure that we're being as fiscally responsible as possible. So the next couple of slides are Mr. Mathers to present. Take it away, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Mark Mathers, Chief Financial Officer. So as Adam said, a constraint on our capital plans, of course, are resources, and as you know, I believe, we have two major revenue sources for the CIP. The first is WC1 sales taxes, and the second one are property taxes. So on your property tax bill, you see a debt rate for the school district of 38.85 cents per hundred dollars of valuation, and both those revenue sources are used, they can be used both for pay-as-you-go cash-funded projects and also debt financing that pledge either revenue source. What we have seen is strong revenue growth that actually has exceeded P-Sorn's assumptions, which is the table at the bottom shows you. Just in fiscal year '21, sales taxes were up 16.4%, very strong, rebounding from the COVID-19 pandemic. But even with the COVID pandemic, in fiscal year '20, our sales tax revenues were up 4.5%. So just a little under actual projections. Fiscal year '21 property taxes were up actually 7.2%, and that reflects growth in the region, of course. So the table at the bottom compares the P-Sorn projections for that period of 2017 through 2024 versus what we've actually seen from 2017 through 2021. So it's a shorter time period than actually what the P-Sorn Committee looked at. But as we just saw on that slide, what the P-Sorn Committee estimated, along with some of the consultants that used, that I've talked to, they estimated total resources that were generated by this new revenue source, the sales tax is 781 million. To date, and again, this is three fewer years than that P-Sorn period, we've received 756 million in resources. That includes revenues that come to us roughly $4 million a month, plus bond proceeds that are pledged off those revenues. In terms of the rollover bond program, the property taxes that we received, P-Sorn estimated for that 2017 through 2024 period 381 million, and we've actually received 496 million in property taxes and rollover bond proceeds. So the total estimated resources needed for what P-Sorn was looking at in 2017 through 2024 was a little under 1.1 billion, and we've actually received 1.25 billion, again, over three fewer years. So it's just not accurate to say that revenues have fallen half of what the P-Sorn Committee projected. In fact, as you can see under those revenue assumptions, our revenues have grown faster and more strongly than what P-Sorn Committee assumed. And again, I've spoken to the consultants who worked with the P-Sorn Committee to validate those numbers, but what they used was an average growth rate of 5% for sales taxes, and what we've seen is actually an average growth rate for the four complete fiscal years we've had since passage of WC1 of 8.75%. The P-Sorn Committee assumed 3% annual growth for property taxes, and we've seen close to double that, 6%. So revenues have outperformed P-Sorn, the P-Sorn Committee's assumptions.
Can I ask you a quick question on that?
I see you're leaning in, Trustee Church.
So a couple places, I have a couple different sources, and I understand, and I, again, a lot of times it gets down to Mark Twain's comments about stats, that, you know, there's different stats everybody can quote. So the first thing I want to quote, and I messed up, my article that I meant to hand out was two-sided, the second side didn't, didn't print. So I'm going to read the quote from the article, and then I'm going to look at our cafer. The quote is, "When community members opt to buy outside of the county, the loss of big-ticket sales revenue like that received from new vehicles hurts entire entities. According to a recent report, the school district bond revenue is coming in lower than expected, with sales tax revenues generating only about half the annual amount expected at around 45 million." So that's, again, an article sponsored by the Car Dealers Association, and I've looked at different stats, but I think I'm looking, well, I'll read it word for word. Governmental funds, statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the year ended June 30th, 2019, so we are going back a couple years. WC1 sales tax revenue, 46,275,511. So again, I think we're kind of, I'm not trying to gotcha or anything, but can you kind of explain the difference?
Sure. So what P-Sorn looked at were not just ongoing revenues, but also the bond proceeds of bonds that pledged that revenue. Again, in talking with J&amp;A Consulting that worked with the P-Sorn Committee, and Sherman and Howard that worked with the P-Sorn Committee, there was never an expectation that we would receive 781 million in total revenue from '17 through '24. It's total resources, even though they may have used the word revenue, but again, talking with consultants that worked with P-Sorn, the expectation was that total resources, which include bond proceeds, would be 781 million from 2017 through 2024. I would just say, the car dealers that quoted that were just wrong. Again, there was, you know, our sales tax revenues have outperformed what P-Sorn Committee assumed or estimated, and total resources from 2017 through 2021 have exceeded roughly 20% what P-Sorn projected from 2017 through 2024. So when we get to 2024, it's going to be significantly over what P-Sorn projected. In terms of folks buying pieces of equipment outside the county, I'm sure that's happened to some degree, but our next slide goes over sales tax revenues, and Washoe County has seen strong sales tax revenue growth since WC1's passage. It has not resulted in below-market expectations for sales tax revenues. And again, in fiscal year '21, our sales tax revenues went up 16%. You can't get much better than that. So, I mean, somebody can, anyone can put out a number, but that doesn't make it correct, and that is, those are incorrect statements by the car dealers.
Okay, I, again, I've got boxes of stuff since I was involved in this, and I don't, I don't need to worry, carry about semantics, and it's definitely no reflection on you nor the school district. But again, the facts are that I just read into the record the $46 million in revenue. I think the car dealers might want to argue that, but the point is, I think, in my opinion, not representing the school district, that the voters were misled, not by you, not by the school district, but by the people that advocated for the passage in terms of the semantics. They're not all experts in economics, and when they say we're going to get 781 million at so much a year, I think we take it on face value. Thank you.
And I would disagree. I would disagree strongly, that, again, actual results have been very close with three fewer years than what P-Sorn projected. These were the resources that were available to build new growth-dependent schools and do other capital projects, and we've realized those revenues and more since passage of WC1.
So the next, Trustee Smith has her mic on.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mathers. A question for someone like me that is not as intimately aware with some of these details. So when the sales tax is collected, which is by the county, and then they gather the money, I assume in some sort of an escrow account or some account of some sort, and then that amount is defined. The reason why I bring that up, just to clarify that on a very basic level, that's the way it happens, because we do literally, factually know exactly how much money we have with this. Although I appreciate that there could be different ways of looking at where the money's coming from or from what sectors of sales. It's very objective, like a number that is transferred into this account is completely factual, right?
Absolutely. When vendors charge you at a restaurant or wherever, store, what have you, they collect that sales tax, they actually remit it to the state. So it first comes to the state, then it goes to the county, and then it comes to us. But yeah, there's, and the state takes off their slides for a commission, but what they collect is what is ultimately received by the school district, yes?
Thank you. And I only clarify that, because of course, this is an education for myself as well, and I just don't want there to be any confusion that the numbers that anyone is seeing here now, they don't reflect any guesses on our part or any assumptions or projections, these are hard numbers, audited hard numbers.
These are actuals, these are not estimates or budgeted numbers, these are actuals that are audited, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Smith. Trustee Church, was that it on your question, for this, at this point, anyway?
Thank you, you've got me doing a lot of research on short notice, but I'm good for now.
Okay, thank you, please, go right ahead.
So just to real quickly continue the conversation, again, sales tax have performed strongly. The chart on the left shows monthly actual revenues by fiscal year. Until COVID-19, we had not seen a month where sales tax weren't higher than the previous year. With COVID-19, we did see a drop from three months compared to the prior year, but as you can see, we've strongly rebounded. The dark red bars reflect fiscal year '21, and you can see, you know, in part due to federal stimulus dollars in people's, you know, bank accounts, we've seen tremendous growth in this revenue. The chart to the right, then, compares our actual debt service of WC1 bonds that we pledged sales tax revenue against, against actual, this is, this is a forecast, against forecasted revenues, and you can see we have a large coverage factor. We collect currently roughly double what we receive. However, there are plans that we'll talk about for use of those dollars, but for now, we have strong coverage on those bonds and also reserves as well. And then our, and then our property tax program, again, we collect a piece of property taxes from homeowners and businesses. This chart compares projected, again, collections versus debt service on bonds, and right now we're pretty tight, you know, debt service on property tax-backed rollover bonds is close to actual collections. We have roughly a coverage factor of 5% to 10%. But as you can see in the gray bars, we actually have a significant amount of rollover bonds that mature, beginning in 2026, 2027. As you see those gray bars going down, those are older property tax rollover bonds that were issued 15, 20 years ago that will roll off, no pun intended, as they mature. So again, that gives us breathing room to build, or rebuild our facilities going forward. So with that, I, unless there are questions, I'll turn it back over to Adam.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, please, just jump on in.
I do have a question about PEGO. I think I know what it means, but I'd rather hear it from you.
Yeah, those are situations where we have the resources to cash fund without debt, a new facility or projects, and so we've done that when we can. We paid for Bohatch Elementary School, for instance, with the revenues that you saw with cash. So PEGO simply means pay-as-you-go, which we like to do, and we like to avoid interest if at all possible, but given the size of our, you know, and the cost of middle schools and high schools, that's hard to do. and high schools, that's, that's hard to do. So, it's, we, it's usually the smaller projects that we're able to cash fund.
I'm sorry, we have one more question. Vice President Menel?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know if this is a question, I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Mathers, that you are, I just feel like you're always sure. You're the number guy and the numbers don't lie and you're, I've never known you to be mistaken. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Menel. Please, Mr. Smith.
Thanks, Mark. I'll continue now, back to our three pillars of the Capital Improvement Program, the CIP. The first one, we talked about asset renewal. We've got one slide on here. I'm telling you, this is like 90% of what we do. We are going to continue to do, to invest aggressively into our existing facilities and our existing assets, but looking ahead, looking forward now in this presentation, ways to improve the efficiency and the, to optimize the management, I do see opportunities and needs for investment into our program with program management software and ways that we can juggle all of the logistical challenges that I talked about with all these many projects and many systems on active campuses. But this is going to be a foundational element of our program that we continue to invest in and continue to optimize. Speeding ahead, we're moving into that second pillar of our program, capacity demands. This is another one I would like to suggest as some required reading, the Facilities Master Plan. It's a, what do you, it's a wonderful, soporific, 100-page planning document, but there's half a dozen pages at the front that really do a great executive summary type of job of summarizing how it is that we make forecasts and plan for these construction projects. You can see highlighted in the 20-year plan, the South Meadows, the Spanish Springs area and the North Valleys area should come as no surprise, as localized areas of growth that we do anticipate and are planning for the construction of new school facilities within the next 20 years. This, I also really want to highlight that this document went through not only the Capital Funding Protection Committee, the Board of Trustees, but also the Chucky Meadows Regional Planning Agency for review and approval in late 2019 and early 2020. It's as much an internal document for our own planning as it is a community document to telegraph to other public agencies and private developers so that we're working cohesively with the community's development to provide these public resources to the community. So, a little bit deeper on capacity demands. It really starts off with a simple assessment of what do we have? Okay, so we can readily understand how many classrooms we have across the district or within an existing school, but then there's a dimension to that question that asks, how many students can we put in each classroom? And so, speaking simplistically, and this is a very arguably overly simplified slide here, we're looking at class size standards, and it's important to note that in FY19, or '18, rather, the board increased class size standards by two students per grade four through 12. That increased the district-wide capacity. It's also important to note, as all of these assumptions are important to note, that that could change in the future, but that's where we're at today. Once we know what we have, we've completed that first max capacity of schools calculation. We know how many total classrooms we have, times the max capacity per classroom gives us the max capacity of the school. So, we're going to talk about facility utilization in two different metrics, enrollment and classroom utilization. So, simplistically, if you look at the enrollment utilization, you've got the total enrollment divided by the max capacity gives you that enrollment utilization. So, think, think about a scenario of 80 second graders at a school. So, there's 80 second graders that enroll in this school for a variety of reasons. Maybe they're on a variance, maybe they're zoned nearby school, whatever, there's 80 second graders at that school. That's not really something that we can control very actively. However, those 80 students trigger four teacher allocations, and so those students will be divided up into four classrooms relatively equally, 20 kids per class. But when we look at this enrollment utilization, those four classrooms say that they can fit 25 students in each of them. So, right off the bat, you're at 80% utilization despite the fact you're using all four classrooms. When we look at classroom utilization, we think in terms of, is there a discrete class, a teacher and a class using that classroom? It's different in middle and high, but this concept still, still translates. But thinking about that example of 80 second graders, you've got four teachers, four separate classes, each in their individual classroom. So, functionally, that classroom utilization is actually 100%, regardless of the number of students in that classroom. So, I, I need to walk through this example in part, not to confuse, but to illustrate the subtleties and maybe the complexities. It's, I think, you know, arguably dangerous. It's a mistake to oversimplify the facility utilization into one composite number because it's just not that simple. These are the actual district-wide composite numbers at elementary, middle, and high as of September of this school year, both from an enrollment utilization standpoint and a classroom utilization standpoint. This is what we have and how we are using it today. Before we go on to what's going to happen in the future.
I'm sorry, I was focused in on the chart, right? Please, go ahead, please.
Thank you. And is there a third element, and maybe I'm getting ahead of your presentation, is there a third element? You've got classroom, you've got enrollment, you've got classroom, and then you have the auxiliary areas like playgrounds, library, bathrooms, cafeterias. So, how do those auxiliary areas play into this figuring that you do?
I would say indirectly. I would say that they don't necessarily factor into this calculation. This is classrooms versus classroom utilization. We will talk more about those auxiliary areas later in the presentation, though. So, again, this is, this is about what we have and how we're using it today, and now we're going to talk about what we're going to need in the future. Okay, this is what we think we're going to have. Now, we're making projections, all right? Anybody that's tried to predict the future ever or in the last 18 months can maybe feel a little bit of the pain that we endure in capital projects, but this is what we do for a living. We have data coming out of our ears and we're pretty decent at it. Some of the biggest variables that go into these projections are listed here on this slide, and some recent trends that are noteworthy are also noted on this slide. I'm not going to tick through all of these in the interest of time, but they are significant and noteworthy, and just like any trend or data point or new variable, I think it's most important to take away from this slide that they can change and that we must prepare for the unexpected and plan conservatively rather than expecting that existing conditions will persist into the future. Birth rates are declining. They have been consistently for some time. That translates in some ways to that second bullet of student generation rates. Are people not having as many children? Are they moving here later in life? What exactly are the root causes of that? But these are the trends that we do see within our data. A more recent trend that has affected our facility needs projections are the impacts of charter schools, enrolling students that otherwise may have enrolled at the Washto County School District, and then, of course, COVID, everybody's very familiar with the impacts to the district-wide enrollment of COVID. But these are some of the variables that go into our facility needs forecasting. Okay, so, once we've determined that there are needs regarding our facilities, we look at a variety of potential solutions. One of the potential solutions that I wanted to make mention of are these portable classrooms. When I talk about portable classrooms, I'm talking about literally a mobile building on wheels, and when we say there's one portable, those are typically divided in two, and so that they provide two classrooms for one portable. Anyway, you'll, you note on here, as I mentioned before, an explosion, a proliferation of portables during those early 2000s. You can see each decade how we've continued to grow in the utilization of our portables, and each decade, the existing portables didn't go away, they just got older, and that's a problem that we are working on. These are considered temporary. So, a little bit to your point previously, Trustee Nicolette, when we talked about this during our last board meeting, those portable classrooms are considered temporary and they are not included in any of our capacity calculations largely because of the fact that while we are supplementing a school with additional classrooms, the parking lots, the playgrounds, the lunchrooms, the music rooms, all of the auxiliary spaces that are necessary to support the entire student body are not supplemented despite the fact that we are adding 20 and 40 and 60 and 100 additional students in portable classrooms. So, we do not count them as permanent or include them in our capacity calculation.
That's an incredibly good statement and very, very well said. So, just for the record, if a school's at 110% capacity and we bring in infinite number of modulators, it's still at 100%. And you've said it very well, we don't know if the cafeteria accommodates that or not or the bathrooms, et cetera, but no matter how many modulators we bring in, it will not affect the, the capacity stat.
That's correct.
Then I have one question that actually goes back. When, do you happen to know off the top of your head, when did WC1, when did that tax actually take effect?
I'm sure Mr. Mathers can correct me, but I believe it was like March or April of 2017, April of 2017, when we first began receiving the receipts.
Great, thank you.
Right. I, I think the tax may have gone into place maybe rather way, or January 1st, but I know the first check didn't come until then. But I want to go back to something Trustee Church said, just to make sure I'm clear. Okay, now I got a little confused. So, when we bring in modulators, or I said, or portables, really, right? Portables, more accurately said. When we bring in portables, it might give us two more classrooms, for an example. So, it gives us, so it may give us room for, say, more kids. So, now, let's say we have 50 more kids, but it doesn't change the actual capacity of the building, right? So, in terms of, in terms of the, say, 110%, in the, in the example that Trustee Church gave, right? In terms of 110%, that, that number, if those, if those, if those portable buildings allowed more kids to come, it would change that number. Am I correct? Because now there are more students that are enrolled at that school, or is it really like saying, hey, the portables are brought in to accommodate the students that are already there? Does that make sense?
I think so. Let me try to answer your question. I mean, back, back to the division slide, when we've got, the total enrollment is what it is. Okay, so if there's 800 students, and we're going to talk about this later today, 850 students at a given school, that's the total enrollment. The max capacity of the school is the base capacity of the permanent building. That's maybe, let's say, 682. So, the enrollment utilization is going to be 850 divided by 682, or well over 100%, despite the fact, we still have to do something with those kids, despite the fact there's 855 kids there, so we need portables to have a class for them, but we do not add that on to our base capacity, and it, that's how you get to be over 100% utilization.
Yeah, in my mind, I was thinking, okay, we have portable, so that means we're going to have more kids there, not necessarily really the portables are brought in to accommodate the kids we already have.
Correct.
Right, got it. Okay, and I, and I knew that, but for some reason or another, I got a little confused during the question, so I wanted to make sure I got that right, so.
I appreciate the clarification.
All good, thank you.
All right, we're still on this one. We've got portables. These are tools in our toolbox. If they're used correctly, they can be effective. It's not a bad thing. It's when they're misused. Rezoning is another tool in our toolbox. I want to highlight the success that we've had over the last five years. It wasn't so long ago that we didn't have a zoning advisory committee where we tried and relatively painfully succeeded at rezoning in certain scenarios. It's not, it's, it's, it's not something to be done, you know, willy-nilly, but it is something that we've done successfully over the last five years and has created a lot of positive outcomes despite the disruption. It allows us to optimize the utilization of our facilities, and that image on the right is actually an older pre-2017 illustration of the vertical alignment of our schools, something we worked really hard on to get our elementary schools together, to our middles, together to our highs. It's not always geographically possible, but you can see just how scattered and disrupted they used to be. Now, those lines are much, much straighter. So, again, just tools in our toolbox before we get to capital construction. Okay, we're looking at our facility utilization, we're looking at our projected needs, we're looking at potential solutions, and now we're up to capital construction, and we're talking about, is an expansion possible and most appropriate? I used the slide on the right, or the image on the right, this is a snapshot from our 20-year facilities plan, and it's focused up in North Spanish Springs. I use this one because it does indicate a potential expansion of Shaw Middle School within the 20-year horizon and also indicates a number of new school facilities. So, we're always going to be analyzing what the appropriate facility solution is, given the needs, and then once we've, let's say, we've concluded whether it's an expansion, a renovation and recon, or reconstruction, or a new build, we have what we refer to as educational specifications, or EdSpecs. These are basically our standards for elementary, middle, and high, not with regards to the specific look and design of the building, but really the pieces and parts of the school facility that we insist on architects including, whether it's a library or a music room or a steam lab or a collaboration space or an 800-square-foot classroom or a 1,000-square-foot classroom. These are the standards that we developed with a comprehensive team of students and staff and administrators and ultimately approved by the Board of Trustees. We've refreshed our standards at elementary, middle, and high in 2016 and 2017 as foundational standards for all of our designs going forward. So, that's really kind of where we set the bar, and then how the architects arrange those pieces and parts is really the design process, but these are our foundational standards that all of our elementary, middle, and highs aspire to achieve. Okay, so that is, that's kind of the capital, the capacity demands portion. We're talking about what we have, how we use it, what we're going to need in the future, and how we physically meet the needs of those demands, but those EdSpecs are an important transition. So, I want to, I want to move ahead and talk now about renovation and reconstruction. So, when we talk about renovation and reconstruction, I gave some examples of opportunities or areas where we've dipped our toes in the water here recently, but I first want to start off by mentioning that this was an original element of the WC1 program from 2016. It was always recognized that not only building new schools would create an inherent inequity between our 50- and 60-year-old schools that were built against very, very different facility standards, but also that those were desperately aging in nature. We're talking 50- and 60-year-old schools that have problems even far beyond the nature of their spaces. Creating that equitable facility for learning was always something that was important and was contemplated as a part of this program of projects in WC1. So, looking NRS 393103, Mr. Rimbardo, I, I know you're appreciative of the statute citing. This is another Clark County-specific one. I think they tag them at 150,000 student enrollment triggers, 393103, but you can read what it entails. Clark County School District has laid out a policy for the expansion and renovation and reconstruction of older buildings, and it looks a lot like what I've pictured on the right. That is the comprehensive facility assessment that we implemented on both the O'Brien Project and the Swope Project to help us better understand what the appropriate facility solution might be, given the characteristics of that building. So, it's not just a subjective decision. This is an analytical, needs-based, and a comprehensive. It's not just enrollment, it's not just age, but it has to do as much with the existing spaces as it does with the actual data and costs. So, you know, this is actually arguably the area of greatest need. So, you know, this is actually arguably the area of greatest need across the school district today. We've got an average age of all of our schools of 42 years, and some 43% of the school district's schools are 50 years old or older. Just to kind of put some of these district-level statistics into context, I want to look at our elementary schools first. Again, focusing on that equitable facility for all of our elementary school students, regardless of where they live. This is a breakdown, you saw these nicknames before, kind of starting from the bottom up. Everybody's familiar with our pinwheel schools. They're all of legal drinking age, some have celebrated their 30th birthdays, if that makes anybody feel old. They've actually stood the test of time quite well. They may well benefit from some form of a revitalization level of scope, but they are doing very well. Moving backwards in time, our pods, we only have seven of them, but they're about to have a midlife crisis, perhaps. They have been studied for renovation, but never significantly modernized. And then, our baby boomers, we kind of started this presentation talking about these schools. There's 20 of them. Another one, image Booth Elementary School, is over 60 years old now. Average age across all 20 of these, remember, they were built in an 11-year span, all 20 of these schools, from 55 to 65, all significantly deficient. They were revitalized, again, more of a fit and finish, carpet, paint, technology, but many as far back as 15 years ago, really looking to see the next chapter of the post-WC1 era, era, focus on investments, significant investments towards facility equity at these levels. I'm going to jump through elementary, middle, and high and kind of have this same conversation with you guys. We've got our wing-type schools, personified by this Vaughn Middle School image, but as you know, there's five of those out there. We've developed a bit of a blueprint with the Swope expansion and renovation. These are the same building types. Vaughn's the oldest among them. Their average age is 60 years old. Vaughn was the first of its kind, and it's got some unique layouts, different from the other schools. So, as with any of these projects, we would put it through a rigorous facility assessment before determining the appropriate solution. But clearly, all of those wing-style middle schools could benefit from a substantial renovation, if not reconstruction. Similarly, Pine Middle School and its sibling, younger sibling, O'Brien, we have a blueprint at O'Brien. It may or may not be the appropriate solution at Pine, but certainly, at 45 years of age and growing, the Pine Middle School could use some significant renovation, if not reconstruction. And then, finishing on the billinghurst or Courtyard models, we have, they've too weathered the test of time quite well, and we've studied them for expansion and renovation and feel when the time is right that there are some very reasonable opportunities to do some special things in those schools. Again, it goes back to those educational specifications to try to provide similar spaces and physical opportunities within these facilities. It's not just about leaky roofs anymore. It's about trying to create a learning environment on par, it can look different, but on par with what we're building new to provide that equity across all of our facilities.
Mr. Cersei, I'm going to interrupt just a moment. There are a couple of people in the audience, if you will. Would you please just pull your mask up to wear them appropriately? I know it is uncomfortable and inconvenient, I truly do, for all of us. I don't think anyone here loves to wear a mask, but if you would be so kind as to do that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. Please, Mr. Cersei.
Okay, almost done here, folks. We've got to talk about the high schools. They're different than middles and elementaries, for sure. But we talked earlier about the opportunity that is being provided to us at the current Proctor-Hug High School, and this is an image of the new rendering. If you haven't seen the video on our building website, please check it out. We're going to do some amazing things at the current Hug High School, starting next year. And sure enough, the older sibling of the current Hug High School, Wooster High School, may in fact benefit from some of those same facility solutions at 60 years of age. We've studied those courtyard high schools, McQueen, Reed really got me, is 47 years old, Reed High School. Anyway, there are some really exciting opportunities that we can modernize and expand and renovate those types of schools. Lots of opportunities. Ultimately, this is, oh, and I wanted to add, Sparks High School with a uniquely small campus was specifically included in the WC1 ballot measure, opportunities there as well. This, you know, I go through all of this to illustrate the need from a facility equity standpoint, is really important to understand. This is not a wish list. This, as a part of the WC1 program, became a mandate when it was approved by the voters. This is the next phase in our long-term CIP, not only to build new schools, to relieve overcrowding, but to renovate and reconstruct our existing facilities, all while investing in our repair needs. As with any wish list, we're not just, you know, writing letters to Santa, we're analyzing this in a high degree of detail with conservative assumptions. So, I'm going to go through this one slide, but I want to make it clear that we're not drawing pie-in-the-sky projections or recommendations about what we can do. This is stuff that we need to do, and we have the resources with which to do it. You saw this graph before, essentially, showing the darker colored bars going into the future. These include now actual revenue projections into the future and potential additional debt service to address the facility needs for those renovation and reconstruction projects. We have modeled potential renovation, reconstruction projects versus the resources that we have over the coming years and demonstrated that we can meet the needs of the future with respect to capital renewal, capacity expansion. This still includes new schools. We're still going to be growing and have to build new schools and still have the opportunity to renovate and rebuild many of our aging interior core schools. So, this is part of a process that we're going to bring next fiscal year. Really, this is great opportunity to discuss and inform, but this happens as a part of the budget cycle when these CIPs are developed. I want to wrap it up just with a couple of final points. We've talked about these three core, the pillars of the program. You know, I need to emphasize again that these, all three must be maintained in order for the program to be healthy, but really that this next phase of WC1, while still feeding those first two pillars of renewal and capacity and construction, looks to be primarily involved in the core school investments, renovating and reconstructing our aging schools. Again, this is a responsibility that we really have to the voters and to the students of those schools to make those types of investments. And WC1 has given us the opportunity to do this. WC1 2016 was an absolute game changer. As I prepared this presentation, there was really no other way to construct it than pre-WC1 and post-WC1. We live in an era now where we have the resources to run our facilities department the way it should be. And it doesn't happen overnight, but we are making plans and we are working hard every day and every year to make tremendous progress, and this is the direction that we're going. So far, we've seen tremendous success with overcrowding relief and for a variety of different reasons, we've been successful over the last five years. Not the least of which is that transparency and accountability. I need to emphasize, the work we've done to hold ourselves accountable is equally as important as the work we've done to build these new schools and relieve that overcrowding, and that it needs to continue. So, all those bullet points at the end, we've touched on our fiscal revenues, our optimi, our, our need to invest in our, all three of our core pillars, but really emphasizing that the next chapter of this era of post-WC1 capital construction is about the core school investments at all levels at a higher rate, and also continuing to maintain that transparency and accountability in partnership with the community, the Citizens Advisory Panel, the Capital Funding Protection Committee, and then, of course, the Board of Trustees. So, I'm, you know, hope you guys enjoyed this. I appreciate the questions. I'm sure there's a few more here, but that's a wrap on my presentation, and thank you for listening.
All right. See what, before, there may be other questions. Trustee Church, you mentioned you had quite a few, so I'm going to, just, we're going to have some public comment, and then we'll come back to, so you get a chance to get all those questions taken care of, okay? So, now we're going to have, we'll have public comment, this is the public comment period on this item, on this agenda, not the general public comment period, so if you're here for that, we will have that. We just won't have that until after we finish with this item. And then, just as a reminder for everyone, according to the Nevada Open Meeting Law, we are, we're going to just enforce the rules. As I said, we're going to continue to do that, to be a little, little better about it, and ask you to make sure you keep your comments as appropriate, whether it's on this agenda item in this case, or generally. And then, once we get to the general comment period, then the, the opportunity to comment on this item, we'll be closed. We're going to ask you to please refrain from any personal attacks, profanity, and those types of things that are all spelled out on your public comment card. Again, we're glad you're here, and I want to hear from you. This is an important item, and we certainly would like to open it up for any public comment on this item.
Craig Madoyl.
Welcome, Mr. Madoyl.
Hi, good morning. I'm Craig Madoyl. I'm the CEO of the Nevada Chapter Associated General Contractors, and our association and our member firms were very instrumental, I like to believe, in the passage and the, and the creation of the WC1 initiative. I wanted to point out a couple of things for clarification. One, the Peasorn Committee was created by the 2015 legislature and met through 2016 to create the ballot initiative. One of the big changes in Nevada law happened, occurred in 2017, it was never contemplated by that committee, which is the sales tax component on internet sales of goods in the state of Nevada. And that has generated a significant amount of revenue that was never considered by the Peasorn Committee. Additionally, I think Adam did a great job today, but I do want to reiterate that WC1 did state in plain language that the revenue is restricted for capital funding and capital improvements of these schools. One of the biggest things, we've done a great job of addressing most of our, I guess with Rio Wrangler coming out soon, the new elementary school, we will have done a good job of addressing a lot of our overcrowding needs. But the modernization of these schools, the ones that I attended as a kid, the Lincoln Parks, the Veterans Elementaries, that investment is still required to ensure that that same educational experience is available for that child at Veterans Elementary, as will be at these new schools. So, I commend you guys for taking this on. This is a big bite of an apple, but, you know, I do think that everything is working as intended and approved by the voters. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madoyl. Thank you for the clarification. That helps explain a lot in terms of the sales revenue and why you're so far ahead of projections, so, thank you for that. JJ?
Dylan Shaver.
Mr. Shaver, welcome, sir. And I know you're going to identify yourself and hopefully tell us your, your connection for those who don't know.
Of course. Thank you, Madam President. For the record, I am Dylan Shaver. I served as the Vice Chairman of your Peasorn Committee. It was a mouthful then, it's a mouthful now. I, I came here to hear a little bit of an update from Mr. Cersei, to see how our efforts were going. What I did not expect to do, and with all apologies, Madam President, I did not expect to come here to have to defend myself. Today, we have heard that we misled voters, or that we did not understand what we were doing. And, and I totally understand that. As many of you know, I have been involved in the political process in this state for a long, long time now. And often, when you lose something, you feel like the way to do that is say, well, maybe the other side, the side that beat me, just, the people who supported them, they just didn't get it. And that's an easy place to go on, I understand that. Nevertheless, I, I feel the need to read into the record the question that voters were actually posed, and that was, shall the Board of County Commissioners of Washoe County be authorized to impose a sales and use tax of 0.54% in the county to fund only capital projects for the Washoe County School District for acquisition, construction, repair, and renovation of school facilities? That was the question as it was posed to voters. The, the Peasorn Committee did not, at the time, contemplate sunsetting it in any way, shape, or form. In fact, the, such recommendations were so uninteresting that we, we didn't even hold a vote on it. It wasn't, it wasn't interesting to us then because it was about funding the long-term needs of this district. I, I think it's also worth pointing out, though, that in the ballot arguments, you get your sample ballot, there's arguments back and forth, the, the folks against the measure did put in there, this doesn't sunset, this will go forever. And yet, voters approved it with a 12% margin of victory, which is huge. You can't, you can't buy those sorts of electoral results, frankly, in this country. I, I think these are important facts to put on the record because, for a long time, we were lucky enough to be invited to many of the groundbreakings for the district to demonstrate to the community, we're using these funds. We did the work you wanted us to do. And we saw that out at, at, what I call Skywalker Ranch, because I can't remember the name, or, or even down at Damani Ranch. And while those invites are less and less frequent, I suspect because I have less and less of a role in this community, we are still members of this community. I still have a five-year-old and a three-year-old who are growing up in this community, and we see the construction happening, we see the work happening, we see what you are doing. And I wanted to urge you to stay the course, keep using these funds as they were, as they were intended, and to thank each and every one of you for your leadership in getting this done. I know these are thankless jobs, and the community sees what's happening out here, and most of us know the good work that is happening.
Thank you, Mr. Shaver, and thank you for your service to the Peasorn Committee.
Kevin Kemner.
I'm sorry, last name Cavner?
Kemner.
Kimner. Welcome, Mr. Kemner, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Kevin Kemner, Principal with TSK Architects, for the record. I just want to touch on a couple of points here. First, about WC1, it is a unique funding model that this, this district has. To my knowledge, only one other district in the country has it, that's Atlanta, which has to reauthorize it on a five-year basis. It uniquely empowers you as a district to move away from the bond-and-bust cycle that other districts go through. And I think you saw earlier in this presentation, the gap from 2012 to 2016, and the legacy that that had for the district. Excuse me. Sorry, I'm sort of gathering my thoughts here quickly, and I have to say, I am a baby boomer, just like some of these schools up here, so I can feel what, what they're feeling, I guess. You know, one thing I want to say is that what's, what I appreciate about what was presented here today is the emphasis on providing quality space for your students. I think there are some, some simple facts that help reinforce why that's important. One of them is that a third of the world's population, every weekday, is in a school, either as a student or a teacher. It is the single most occupied facility worldwide and within this country. Students will spend up to 50% of their waking hours in a school. And that, the impact that those spaces have on their development and long-term achievement is well-proven and, and essential to lifelong success. And then, lastly, overcrowding, which is one of the key pillars that was presented here today, is sort of called an unseen factor to most people. Most people don't see overcrowding in schools because they're never in schools when they're fully occupied. And so, the emphasis on providing adequate space and, and its long-term impact to the students of Washoe County shouldn't be underestimated and should be kept in mind as this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemner. I appreciate the, the connection with the 2015 legislature. I forgot to lay that out as I kind of gave the background, so thank you.
Valerie Fianaca.
Welcome, Ms. Fianaca.
Thank you. I think I'm older than boomer. I don't know how those, how those terms.
Uh-oh.
I just want to point out that I voted for WC1, and I think it's a good funding mechanism. I also want to say something that's probably not relative to you all, because I'm old. But I grew up 60 miles from the Mexico border in a very small town. I went to the same high school that my grandmother went to, and my mother went to, and I went to, and generations, two generations beyond me have gone to. There are only three schools in town, the elementary school, the high school, and the middle school. They're very well taken care of. I took all four of my children on individual field trips to go visit those schools. You can still walk into them, you can still walk through them, they still look like the same time that I went to school there. They are well-kept. There's value in maintaining and keeping your schools in that pristine condition. They've added air conditioning, which is a good thing in Arizona, but they only added it about 20 years ago. When I went there, there was none. Keeping them up is just as important as building new ones. Obviously, the population has not grown a whole lot in the area that I grew up in, but the maintenance of these schools is probably as important as building the new ones. If you keep them, they'll last for hundreds of years if they're built well. And I think that what you're building right now are good schools. My kids grew up in a fantastic school. It opened at capacity, if not higher, at Spanish Springs High School than what it was built for. And it's obviously now the, the most crowded school in the entire district, but they're well-maintained, if they're kept well-maintained, which this should provide the funds to do, WC1, that is. I, I just don't see how we should have to tear them down and build new ones after 60 years. That doesn't compute in my brain if they're That doesn't compute in my brain if they're well-maintained.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
That's all I have for this item.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Let's bring you back here to the table. If there are other questions, concerns, comments, trustee chair, and then you said you had some more things, we want to make sure we give you that opportunity as well. Your mic, get your mic.
I've got plenty, and I'll try to be brief. I do have a lot of questions. And that was a very good statement, that nobody anticipated the revenue from the internet sales. So I think that kind of worked in my favor, that the stats predicted may not have materialized but for that. So, I've got so many questions, let me, and I'm trying, some of them are comments, some of them are questions, so I was trying to get my questions out first to Mr. Circey. I guess I'll go into comments. The, well, Mr. Circey, the Capital Projects Committee, my understanding, was presented back in 2018, or before that, the cost of Desert Skies was 60.6 million, and an article allegedly used the word guaranteed. And my understanding from the charts that I have in my handout, it came in at 78.783 million. Is that roughly correct?
So it's always important to specify exactly what's included in the numbers that are being presented, right? So the 60 and change number that you just referenced was approximately the value of the construction contract for the building itself. There was a separate construction contract for the site improvements, and there are additional costs associated with the furniture, fixtures, and equipment, as well as the professional consultant management and testing and inspection, things of that nature. So without specifics in front of me, the $60 million number rings a bell as to the construction cost of the building only, but the total cost of the project is always going to be more than just the cost to construct the building.
Okay. Would it be safe to say that when WC-1 passed, some of the quotes and estimates that were made about the cost of schools, the final cost turned out to be much higher than we predicted?
I'd say that would be safe to say.
And that was before COVID and 2021, when you can't even get lumber, et cetera. That was just before then, correct?
Yeah, we've been building new schools since 2017, and all those costs have been approved through the school board and the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
All righty. And then, most of my things are going to be comments, but one thing we didn't mention here today, and just for the record, not a gotcha, because I did submit this in advance, although late last night, some of those costs, at least in 2019, the stats that I have, and it's in the handout for the trustees, about 3.1 million went to what I call non-nail drivers. In other words, construct overhead administrative costs. Would that be correct?
So there's certainly a number of staff required to operate within the legal requirements. All of these capital projects, as I mentioned, hundreds of capital projects across dozens and dozens of active school sites must be coordinated. Those projects must be bid competitively in accordance with state law, and each and every dollar must be carefully accounted for. So yes, there are a number of staff that work for the Capital Projects Department in support of this program, and almost all of those expenditures are actually charged to, in essence, or a part of the total cost of those projects.
And that's paid out of WC-1?
It's paid out of the variety of capital revenue streams that fund all of our projects, including WC-1, yes.
All righty. Do you have the figure, and this is what I sent out late last night, because mine is December of 2019, do you have the 2020 or 2021 figures on how much?
I don't handy, but I believe Mr. Mathers has a...
I predict it's going to come.
So for Mark Mathers, Chief Financial Officer, for fiscal year 21, '22, the estimated cost of what we call program administration costs, which Adam kind of referred to as including a bond accountant, buyers who bid these projects, is 2.3 million.
2.2, so we're down quite a bit from the...
2.3 million.
All right. Now, the 2019 shows 3.139 million. Does that mean we're down, or am I looking at a different figure?
You're kind of mixing apples and oranges. The request was, what staff are paid by capital resources and included in the 3.1 million you asked about in 2019, or that someone asked about in 2019, would be capital project managers whose time is directly charged to a project.
I see.
So we have project management staff who work directly on individual projects, and their time is allocated to those individual projects. And then we have program administration staff, like I say, for the bidding of projects that are involved in the bidding of projects, or the accounting of projects, or just the management of the project management staff, who are also paid for out of capital resources.
Okay, so 2.178 in 2019, almost the same, 2.2 currently.
2.3.
2.3. Okay, so it's gone up a little bit. And those are people that don't necessarily all work for capital projects. They work anywhere in the administration, but their time would be calculated towards that project. Am I, have I had that right?
That's right. Their time is spent on capital project, yes, but it includes folks in the business office, for instance, and other areas.
Okay. All right. With that, I'm going to launch into my speech part, and then if anybody, including staff, wants to correct me, they can. First of all, I'm going to go back to my position that we're losing sales tax revenue, and some people don't think that article by the car dealers is accurate. And to be clear, these are wonderful schools. Staff is doing a wonderful job on accounting. I'm not questioning the legality, you know, maybe the ethics of how we, how people perceive us ethically. I'm not questioning the legality of any of this, but I think there are serious issues in terms of what the public expects out of the use of that tax money. So I want to put that on the record, you know, before somebody goes, whoa, you're threatening, you know, you're going to get censured because you're threatening to sue the district. No, this is simply me expressing my opinion as an elected official on what the public expects for us. So I want to be clear on that. So when we talk about those Mark Twain statistics, the Nevada Department of Taxation has what's called combined sales and statistical reports. So I went back to March of 2018, and I compared the monthly sales of automobiles for Washoe County. Now, this is, so this is fairly soon after WC passed, March 2018. Washoe County, negative 3.5%. Carson City, positive 16.1%. Lion County, positive 10.5%. Those are those Mark Twain stats that we talked about. So then I said, well, maybe that's kind of not right, and let's look at the yearly compared to the previous year, June of 2017. It is considered motor vehicles and parts, and I don't think parts make up much of it. Washoe County was up, 8.1% in 2017, but Carson City was up 12.9%. Lion County was up 39.2%. And as soon as WC-1 passed, and it's in the handout for public record, I took a screenshot of the ad, and we see this still today. Save big on sales tax in Fernley, Fernley Jeep. So I think it's undeniable that people have voted with their wallets, and that money hurts everybody from Washoe County that we could have got here, et cetera. And people say, don't come to me with a problem if you don't have a solution, so make sure I don't forget to give you the solution. The other thing we know is, this is an entirely new world. I almost feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone. Nobody in 2016 predicted that we'd have distance learning, that we'd have more people going to homeschooling. The brick-and-mortar concept of schools is totally different today than 2016. The brick-and-mortar concept of schools, even though WC-1 never ends, is probably extremely different that we'll see in 2031, 20, you know, in the future. So we really have to ask ourselves, again, I'm not talking about whether WC-1 is a great idea or a bad idea, but we have to be stewards of how we spend that money now and what we do with that. Enrollment was 64,500 a couple of years ago, now we're down to 62,500. We're down, in spite of the booming economy. So, again, those darn stats, the stats from WC-1 were that we were over 100% overcrowding on schools. So the CAFER is going to come out this November, and I can't wait to see it. And I recognize some of the elementary schools are grossly overcrowded, and some of them are grossly undercrowded. But total elementary school capacity, 83%. That's the Washoe County School District's own stat from the CAFER, which is kind of commonly known as the audit. But the middle schools' capacity, it says enrollment-to-capacity ratio, if we want to be technical, 82%. High schools, 84%. Now, that was before all these new schools were built. That was, we're going to have HUG High School, we've got other schools that have already been built, and we have the enrollment that is down. So, again, I'm not trying to be negative, but I'm looking at the facts. And so, you know, we just can't ignore this stuff. So let me go on. And this is a question, and this is one I've been told. So we build these new schools, where does the funding for the teachers, the staff, the bus drivers, et cetera, where does that come from?
Mr. Mathers?
So Mark Mathers...
Right, you're looking for a response, right?
Yes. Mark Mathers, CFO. So when we build a new school, it's important to recognize, due to overcrowding in nearby schools, that the teacher, the students and the teachers are moving from those overcrowded schools into the new school. So that does not represent a new cost. There are some new costs associated with the new schools, such as a principal, dean or assistant principal sometimes, counselor, secretary, staff, and so forth. And there's the utilities cost to power up the school. So there are some additional costs, and we'll talk about it later this afternoon when we talk about a potential new elementary school. Those costs are paid for by our operating revenues we receive from, now from the state. We know when we open a school, we have to fund the operating costs, so for, you know, simplicity's sake, I'd say they get the first dollar. We have opened, as Adam pointed out, six new schools since the passage of WC-1, and we found the operating revenues to pay for those operating costs.
And do you feel comfortable we can find the revenue for new schools that will be built for teachers? If, forget the recruiting problem, if we can get them, do we have the revenue for those to staff those?
Well, I don't have a crystal ball. We have been able to, so far, you know, the calculation, for example, for the school we'll look at this afternoon is additional operating costs of $500,000 to $700,000. That's roughly 80 to 100 students that just need to go to that school, that we retain or represent new growth, where we would break even financially between that new school and our operating revenues. So it doesn't take a lot of additional students in an area, say Southeast Reno, to pay for the net incremental additional costs of a new school.
Okay, thanks. And then I'm going to kind of get back to my speech. And again, I'm not here to be a flamethrower and blame anybody...
I'm sorry, I'm, excuse me, trustee, I think trustee Smith had a question right where we're, no, no, it's not to stop you, but it's because I think it was related to where you were. So before you go to a new topic?
Yes, that's exactly correct. Thank you very much, Madam President, because I'm absolutely following along with you. The percentages that you had noticed or that you were reading, and I'm not exactly sure where they are, but I want to clarify that were those the enrollment capacity, so the enrollment utilization, or the classroom utilization on those lower numbers? And the reason why I ask is because I thought it was very insightful on Slide 28, where we were told about the different ways that numbers look. And so you can take a look at the district-wide composite facility utilization, and you see much higher numbers on the cat, at the classroom utilization, when you look at it from that perspective versus the enrollment. The reason why I'm asking is I'm curious which one those numbers are, so that, only so I can truly follow along with you, because I am absolutely following along with you.
Were you asking me?
Yes, yeah.
Turn your mic on.
Because I'm not sure what numbers you were looking at.
Certainly. Tell me that one more time, exactly which stats, the 82% capacity?
Yes, sir.
That comes out of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and this one's dated June of 2020.
So are those numbers the enrollment utilization? Okay. And I, again, because we've been shown on this slide how the classroom utilization looks different than enrollment, and that just gives me more context so that I can follow along. Thank you.
Okay. And then, actually, I see at the same time you were looking at the handout for the people that are paid the 2.2 million or 2.3 million. Just for the record, again, I'm going to read just some of them, we get an idea. It goes anywhere from some of the very top people, and it's not all, it's not like they're paid 100%, just for the record. They're paid, if somebody spends 25% of their time on capital projects, that's what's paid out of capital project. Business accountant, IT senior network analyst, IT project manager, public relations specialist, chief operations officer, you know, I can go on and on, purchasing buyer. So I think, and to the best of my knowledge, and this is part of my concern, it's what's called supplantation, which my spell checker doesn't even have. Supplantation, essentially, in my mind, and what I've read, is when you take existing positions and you supplant that with a new fund. So in other words, these people weren't created after WC-1. Every one of those job positions, or almost every one, existed before WC-1, and suddenly after WC-1, their salary went to, became subject in part or whole from the WC-1 money. So that, my point is, that was predicted by the opposition, and I'm going to get into in a minute, well, I'll get into it now. And I've deleted all the names, I'm not here to embarrass anybody, but this is...
Trustee, do you want a response to that piece that you talked, I mean, I think that's a good, that's a good question, right?
If I can finish the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me read in, because I think it would help.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, and I've redacted the names again, so I don't want to embarrass anybody, nor is it relevant. And some of these are quotes, so they may or may not be accurate. Like, here's one from the Sierra Sun, and it's exactly what one of our public speakers said, which is wonderful. "By state law, the district's capital funds can only be used to build schools," end quote. Here's another one, and I'm editing these for brevity. "To fund only capital project of the school district for the acquisition, construction, and repair and renovation of school facilities." But it gets a little more specific. Here's a great one. Quote, "The money from this tax increase could only be used to repair schools and build new ones. It could not go to salaries, legal fees, or anything else," end quote. Number three, "To offset, augment, supplant salaries," they said, and this is the voter guide where we were predicting it. We predicted it would be used to offset, augment, and supplant salaries. But they said, in the voter guide, "All funding generated by WC-1 is legally required to address only school construction repairs, not on administrator salaries." And I got to be honest, I think that those salaries are administrator salaries. Here's another one. "By state law, the district's capital funds can only be used to build schools, to repair and renovate existing schools. WCSD has no ability to supplant funds or divert current or future capital funding to non-capital needs. Since no general fund revenues are used in a capital funding program, supplantation is not possible." Well, I got to say, I think that's exactly what we saw. And I also want to put in record, and this is not a reflection on anybody here today, but in a prior CAFER, and I'd have to go back a couple of years to find the exact year, a sharp auditor found about $800,000 in supplanted capital project funds being used to pay principals, like teachers, the principals, not principal like in interest.
PAL.
Principal of the school, the principal is your pal. And as my understanding is, essentially, the school district had to pay that back to itself from the general fund. So they, it was $800 that was being used. These things happen, but it was caught by the auditor, sharp auditor, and so in that case, supplantation almost certainly did happen. So my point is, I think the public, when they voted for this, has a certain expectation of where that money is going, and I think we may be disappointing the public, and we certainly have new board trustee members that, you know, don't know any of the history of this, but... of this, but I just want to make that point. I have a lot more to talk about, but I can break now if other people have comments or questions on that.
I think the things that you're talking about deserve to be addressed, so don't kind of put a pin right there, don't lose where you're going, but I think we'll turn to CFO to start, because some of those things have come up before, so I know there's been some comment. And I think it's important to clarify, to whatever the case may be, right, to respond to what you're saying. That's important for the public, right?
Sure.
Please, Mr. Mathers?
Thank you, Mark Mathers, CFO. Quite a few statements there. First, in terms of the allocations of time of administrative staff to capital projects, I want to go this step by step, but the IT positions that you referenced are actually involved in directly projects. So we added to the CIP several years ago, IT infrastructure projects. This is replacement of network equipment and other equipment behind the walls, so to speak, and those individuals are working directly to order and install that equipment, so they are not administrative overhead positions, if you will. But in terms of what one might consider administrative or overhead positions, I mean, this is a serious issue. We look at it. We confer with our bond counsel, we confer with our tax counsel on the appropriateness of these allocations. And the U.S. Treasury Department has recognized those positions that are involved in, for instance, the counting of bond proceeds can be allocated to those resources, that that's a completely appropriate use of those proceeds. The projects don't account for themselves, and we have a significant now capital improvement program, and it requires a good amount of accounting. In fact, we'll probably need additional accounting staff to help us in the future. But we have one-point-two-five bond accountant positions. The title of the position's bond accountant. It's really important to, again, maintain compliance with U.S. Treasury regulations and account for projects responsibly. So every year, we go through a process where we confirm the allocations of the staff, confirm they are working on capital projects. When there's a change in that position's time spent on those projects decreases, we decrease the allocation. But it is something we do annually. Again, we confer with bond counsel and tax counsel. These are completely appropriate costs that can be charged to capital revenues.
Are those expenses all they did as well, Mr. Mathers?
They are.
Because I think that's important to know as well.
They are, and I guess I might as well just address the last point of Trustee Church. The audit finding from several years ago was not a finding that we overexpensed principals' time to school construction. What happened was those positions were initially allocated a hundred percent to schools, and then again, when we went through the process of confirming those principals' times, we identified where a portion of their time was spent on more operating activities, developing a master schedule for the school, you know, for the upcoming school year. And so we transferred those costs that were involved in operating purposes out of the bond fund into the general fund. And I think this is what you would want us to do, right? You would want your business team to be looking closely at expenses and identifying truly what's related to capital construction, and there is significant time that principals spend in working with our construction contractors and capital project staff and the architects in looking at space needs for that building or, you know, paint colors or the height of counters at the schools or what have you. They are working a lot on that, but there was a portion of their time that was, again, spent, say, on scheduling. And so I think we did what you would want us to do, Trustee Church, was to journal voucher those costs out of the bond fund into the general fund. The audit finding was simply a finding that in the general fund, by virtue of transferring those costs into the general fund, we exceeded the functional budget for general administration that year. There's a very relatively unknown law that says you have to budget by function, and so even if you're under budget in total, if you exceed the budget by function, there's a technical violation. There's no penalty for that. It's not a violation of law. It's just, you know, guidance from the Department of Taxation that you should stay within your functional budget. Again, because we had to transfer those costs out of the bond fund and the general fund, we exceeded the functional budget for general administration that year. But again, I think it's what you want us to do, which is always ask and verify, how much time is each of these people working on capital projects versus operating purposes? One last point in terms of supplantation. Back when we had a new member of the Capital Funding Protection Committee, we went back and researched how much administrative costs for staff had we allocated to the capital improvement program before WC one. And in fiscal year 2014, we allocated two million dollars of administrative staff to the capital improvement program back when the CIP was just twenty million dollars. It stayed pretty steady since, and we talked about two-point-three to two-point-five million dollars of costs now. We did add some positions, given the substantial increase in the capital improvement program. So as of fiscal year nineteen, when we last look at it, again, we were talking about costs of two-point-three to two-point-five for a CIP size of two-hundred-eleven million. So the CIP is ten times what it used to be, and yet the cost of administrative positions allocated to the CIP has increased somewhat, but nowhere near proportionately to the increase in the CIP. So it's something the district's always done and continues to do appropriately, again, in consultation with bond counsel.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mathers. I'm going to go to Superintendent McNeil wanted to weigh in on that, and then I think Trustee Smith, you wanted to, on this same topic, and then Trustee Church, we're coming back to you on picking back up from there, okay?
Thank you very much, President Taylor. Mark, typically in a CAFER, there is a management response. And if I'm correct, back in 2018, when that CAFER came out, that actually was articulated for the record, and it is documented within the CAFER as far as exactly what had transpired, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, hopefully, you should be able to see that too, Trustee Smith, and there, I mean, Trustee Church. Superintendent said it was noted in that CAFER, and you're better at the CAFER than I think anybody, any of the rest of us up here. So hopefully, you see that note in there to kind of provide that clarification, because it's important that we see the whole piece. I mean, and I think these are very important questions, quite honestly, that you're bringing forward, and I think it's good to be able to address them and make sure we get the whole picture, so. Trustee Smith?
Thank you, President Taylor. After this topic, I do have other questions about the presentation.
Okay, but we're going to go back to Trustee Smith.
Yes, we are. So staying on this topic as a follow-up to Mr. Mathers, can you clarify the role that an external auditor plays in this? So are we just looking at our own numbers? Can you just clarify for the public, objective third-party auditors and the role that they play in all of this?
Well, an external auditor is going to be auditing the draft financial statements we prepare for the annual comprehensive financial report, so they can, they are reviewing the accuracy of those numbers. They can do a, they do a sampling of transactions to make sure that, you know, we haven't misstated the accounting records. They can also choose to zero in on any number of different issues that they see fit in the course of their audit, but they are verifying the accuracy ultimately of our financial statements, yes.
Thank you. And these are not people employed by the district. It's completely a third party that's independently doing this.
Yes, ma'am. And in terms of that year, it was I. Bailey, and now we use Crowe, an accounting firm, you know, a national accounting firm, to audit our financial statements, yes.
Good, thank you, Trustee. Is that you, Trustee Church?
Sure. All right. It just, you know, we can only, we can beat dead horses on and on on any particular subject. The, I found the information I wanted, first I have to apologize, I said eight hundred thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-eight, six-eighty-eight, so I was off by over a hundred thousand dollars, so a little under seven hundred thousand. The second thing is, the audit found, and there was an email sent, and then the person with the school district said, hey, I made a mistake, I got it. The audit found that, in fact, a hundred percent of the principal's time was allocated to the building fund, so it's a hundred percent. Originally, the information went out, you know, thirteen percent, nineteen percent, and, you know, mistakes happen, but I just want to point out that mistakes do happen. I don't think it would have been caught but for the CAFER. I mean, in other words, it was a mistake, but we did have to.
No.
We did have to, no? Okay.
So, again, a hundred percent of those principals' times initially was budgeted to the bond funds. Staff, before an external auditor came on board, asked the question, how much time principal do you spend working with the contractor? We looked at their calendar meetings. The superintendent remembers when she was deputy superintendent. We asked for their calendar, their outlook calendars. We did an accounting of their time before the auditor came on board. We made those transfers before June thirtieth. So we did everything according to how you would want us to do it. And again, the only violation here was the fact that, as a result of those transfers, our general fund functional budget for general administration was exceeded. So it wasn't as a result of an auditor finding something that we hadn't seen, it was ourselves proactively asking for an accounting of those principals' times. Initially, it was allocated a hundred percent to the bond fund, and we corrected it ourselves before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for any misunderstanding.
Well, you have more questions, right?
Yeah, so I'm pretty well ready to wrap up. In the testimony to the legislature over the potential WC one, they were told that it's a new high school, and I use that as an example, a hundred and ten million. It's a lot of money, but okay. And then when WC came out, they correctly updated that to a hundred and thirty-five million in a lot of the arguments for why we need new schools. And then when the HUG High estimate came out, it was two-hundred-and-fifty-two million, but then it's potentially coming in lower than that. So I guess a question, do we ballpark, do we know what HUG High is probably going to cost us?
So currently, the two-fifty-two is approximately the amount that has been allocated by the Capital Funding Protection Committee and the Board of Trustees for the entire project cost. That includes design, land acquisition, permitting, construction, the furniture fixtures and equipment necessary to open and operate the school, and then, of course, the professional and technical management to cause the building to be constructed. Based on current estimates, the actual expenditures are likely going to be close to plus or minus two-hundred million.
Great.
And I want to make sure it's crystal clear, that is total project costs, not just the cost per, don't divide that by the square footage and get some cost per square footage metric. That's a separate subsection of that total estimated actual cost for the project, and we do update that every time we meet with the Capital Funding Protection Committee as to the total expenditures for each allocation. We update that, and then, of course, bring that same information to the Board of Trustees every other month.
Okay. Yeah, and this is what's so confusing. I'm a retired Air Force officer and cop. I don't, I just know what I read, I just know what I read in the paper, and I mean that figuratively, because there's an article from the paper, two-hundred million, but it's, I've looked nationwide, and that's a lot of money. I mean, that's a lot of money for a high school, no matter how much we break it down by per pupil, by per square foot, by total cost, et cetera. I can only assume that that same figure is comparable to what we told the legislature and what we told the public, that we weren't skewing the numbers then when we said a hundred million or a hundred and thirty-five, but I don't know, because again, some of this is way above my pay grade, and Mr. Mathers has been great to explain that. So I'll try to wrap up, because I know we're getting tired here.
Whatever questions you, this is the time to ask, Mr. Church.
No, I understand. No, I think it's time to wrap up. So we've got a wonderful view of what's going on. We've had some great discussion. We have very expensive schools. We're in a whole new world of distance learning, brick and mortar schools being questioned. The costs now are astronomical, and part of the problem, when you have this money and the builders know it, and the builders are tough, you know, I just bought a house and they had to put in like, I think, a fancy air conditioner, because they couldn't get the cheap air conditioner that I was supposed to get, and they had to finish the house. So, you know, builders are under tremendous pressure, and our workforce, those men and women work hard. I got no problem, there's no criticism of any of that. But we are responsible to the taxpayer and to the, we have a fiduciary duty, I hear that term a lot, to the school district and to the taxpayer. So before we move forward with just saying, yeah, go for it, there's so much we have to look at, there's so much. One of the things I pushed for in research or in reality would be to look at a live-in academy for kids that are at risk, that parents are drug dealers, and if we could afford, if we're going to build the buildings, could we build a live-in academy? Can we build housing? And we've talked about this before, and it depends on maybe the funds. Can we build funding with capital projects to give teacher housing so we can do a better job of recruiting and all the advantages that go with it? Can we build housing at Incline Village so the teachers don't and staff don't have to commute? Can we build that housing at Incline Village so even if they live down the hill, if they have to attend a football game or if it's snowing, that they have a place to stay for the night? Tons and tons of questions. So I told you at the beginning, I wasn't going to come to you with a problem if I couldn't come up with a solution. First of all, I've looked at this in depth. We have no money, basically, and I've got this in writing from previous board presidents that are no longer here. Essentially, we have no money for teachers and staff to put into schools, even if we could. It alleviates the overcrowding at the other school, but it doesn't increase class size or any of that. And we don't have the ability to raise taxes like the city and the county might be able to do. So my first thing that I think we as a board need to think about is lowering the, correction, going to the legislature. The only way WC one can be fixed, if it in fact would be broken, is to go to the legislature. Lobby the legislature to lower the sales tax from eight-point-two-six-five to seven-point-nine-nine-nine. And I say that because that's the psychological barrier, even though Carson City and Lyon County are maybe a little bit cheaper than that, if they're not enough cheaper that I think people would go. Second of all, to amend WC one, to say we can use it at our discretion as a board, that's why we get the big bucks, and use it for our discretion to have new teachers, to have bus drivers, you know, to do it, if we want more schools, great, but we're at the point now where we built a lot of the schools that we had planned to with that seventy-one million over nine years. So that's my first suggestion, is simply lobbying the next legislature. The second idea, because this is so complicated, and we have, what, we're covering seven-hundred-and-eighty-one million dollars of spending in ninety minutes, just like the Capital Projects Committee does, that we have a committee or a task force to look at this, whether it's permanent or temporary, I'm okay with temporary. I'm very happy just having the superintendent put her task force together, pick who she wants on it, report back to her, no open meeting law issues, no nothing, but when you're dealing with this kind of money, and that Capital Projects Committee, which by the way is largely made up of elected officials in the community, they don't, they're not accountants, they're not experts, and they're busy. You know, the mayor of Sparks, he's busy. He doesn't have time to pay attention to all this in ninety minutes. So those are my two ideas that I'd like to just, you know, and whether we decide today or later, but this is technically an action item on the agenda, but I would love to see a committee or task force of experts, maybe a subcommittee of the audit committee. I'm open, I'm open to ideas, but I want to see something, please. It's just too much money, too much time, too much for our staff to be able to do, and I'm just so concerned as a representative of the taxpayers that we got to do something. So committee, task force, subcommittee of the audit committee. We have approximately fourteen committees in the school district. We do have an audit committee, but there is no committee dedicated to the overall study or recommendations on fiscal responsibility. And as I mentioned, the Capital Projects Committee, and we didn't even talk about the Oversight Committee, which is the same people, they're not experts, and they're not full-time, and they don't have time to look at this except to come, vote yes or no, and go. So that's the bottom line. I sure appreciate everybody's time. The audience has been nice, everybody up here has been wonderful, and I know I've hit a lot of stuff. There's some, a great article in the Reno News and Review that I didn't have time, but it's on the record, and the trustees have it. Some great handouts that I gave out, you know, for information. I thank Mr. Mathers and Mr. Cersei, because I don't pretend to understand all of this in its entirety, and you've set me straight, and I apologize for any misconceptions that I had on some of the facts and figures, so you did a great job. I had on some of the facts and figures, so you did a great job. But with that, I'll turn it back, but I would love to see some kind of a task force or committee to look at this.
Thank you, Trustee Church. I said that, and that's going to be here for discussion, and we also, Trustee Smith had some questions as well, so we can either comment on that. And one thing is that we have to remember what the agenda item allows us to do, right? As I said, we have to remember what the agenda item allows us to do, and I don't think it allows us to set a committee, I don't believe. It doesn't, okay, I didn't think it did. Okay, so that, it doesn't mean that it couldn't happen, it just means it can't happen today. Right? And it certainly doesn't, yeah, we don't lobby anyway, so that certainly doesn't allow us to take care, to do that one either, like in terms of saying, yes, this is what we want to do. So you know, you remember how we're restricted to what the agenda item says that we're going to be deliberating on, and neither of those are there.
And I couldn't hear what legal said, but as a district in general terms, we have a lobbyist.
Yeah, I was the one who said, we can't lobby anyway. I meant us as trustees. That, I was just, I just meant that, he didn't say that I did. But I hear what you're saying in terms of, is that something that the board wants to ask the Government Affairs folks to do? Is, that's what you mean by we? Okay.
Again, looking at the agenda, yeah, it is so vague that I don't think we could do much today, but thank you.
Mm-hmm. And the whole idea, go ahead.
Well, we don't want to create a record that the agenda's vague. The agenda's clear and complete for the purpose of this presentation.
Thank you, I was just going to say, it was written this ways intentionally so we can have this kind of conversation and so on, and make sure, certainly may lead to others, right? And that's okay, right? That's okay. Trustee Smith, I know, I want you to make sure we get your questions as well.
Thank you so much, Madam President. So I have a question around how we view the utilization of some of our older schools. So in my years with the Zoning Advisory Committee, we've looked at different areas of the county, and there are some older schools where the population has changed in that area. So we may have schools that are at a lower amount of utilization, they're relatively close to each other. Do we ever do our own audit of school utilization? Are there opportunities to look at schools that are close to each other, possibly build one big new great school and reimagine that educational environment for a larger area? This is just a very open question, but I'm curious about that.
In short, I would say absolutely. We are continuously evaluating the enrollments and the individual utilization at all of our schools. Conceptually, the concept of intense renovation, expansion, and reconstruction could potentially open up a scenario where we would entertain something like what you just described, where historically underutilized facilities might be combined into a new, single facility that meets our modern standards. It is something that we have looked at, but as the presentation described, a variety of potential tools in our toolbox, but now with the means to go forward and actually explore them, all of those options and then some are a part of the consideration.
I appreciate that. I know we're not providing any direction on that, but it is something that I am very curious about, and that approach is a way of bringing brand-new, modern facilities to other areas of our community that are not necessarily seeing the new home growth, but are equally as important to us. So I just share that as feedback, and I look forward to maybe hearing in the future if a plan like that is ever on our, a plan like that is ever brought to us. My second question was getting rid of portables. I know we talked a lot about all the portables that we have, but the reconstruction of the schools, the expansion of the schools, is there ever a plan to get rid of all the portables or as many of them as possible?
I would say that it's a part of the ongoing capacity efforts that have been described here today. It's continuous, I mean, they're intended to be temporary and mobile by nature. So some of our schools, we've found have basically become dependent on those portables and if we like, permanent portables. That might be a scenario where we need to either come up with a more permanent or a more appropriate facility solution. Other, other facilities, you know, it may be just tightening the belt, so to speak, where, you know, just like in our own homes, we tend to expand to the space provided to us regardless of what we have. So, you know, being a little more disciplined with the space that we have available to us at some of our schools, especially in light of changing enrollments, and saying, are those portables truly necessary? And we, we've embarked on a program of removal and basically renewal of those portables. It really got paused with COVID. Schools that we maybe had portables that were no longer needed and we had intended on relocating or removing them, we paused that entirely in the interest of just providing as much space for social distancing as possible. As you saw, it took decades to accumulate this many portables. It's going to take considerable amount of time to scale it back. It will always be portables in use, they're a valuable tool, but absolutely, it's something we worked pretty hard on throughout the district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Trustee Church?
If I, I am so happy to have Trustee Smith on here because such great issues that I forgot to mention or didn't think of. If I think I heard you right, you talked about like clustering some of the schools. If you drive out in Lyon County, I think there's an area in some places nationwide when I've traveled, where you'll see three schools co-located, elementary, middle, and high school, so they can share the soccer field, share the baseball field, share the auditorium, share the pool, but yet they kind of keep them separate obviously because you can't be mixing all those kids. And it's just an example of the bottom, think outside the box, innovative, what are the other ideas we can do? And so I'll throw out, just to throw it out, another option is to sell some of the older schools that are underutilized because the demographics of that neighborhood, while we have growth in South County and my area and as well as North Valleys. And then the issue of not buy-build, but sell-build, where maybe you could go out for bid, and I don't know if it's, I assume it's legal, where you tell, you know, you go out to a contract and people bid, and you give that old land to the builder, and the builder, not the school district, builds a new school and then change, the titles change. And if we have to come up with extra money because of the value of the land, whatever, fine, but you know, anything that's on the table to try and save the taxpayer money. And so those are things we may want to look into. And again, if, because we can't do it today, when are we going to do it? I mean, who's going to make the decision when? And that gets back to, I think, to the need for maybe a task force or a committee or another, another dedicated meeting where it's on the agenda, something, but you know, talking about it's great, but who's going to do it? Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Looking for other questions, comments? For anyone, certainly want to thank staff, that was quite a bit of work to put all that together, and thank you for having the information to be able to answer the questions that all of us had and provide some clarity on things that have happened in the past and bringing us up to speed and accurate information, which of course we all want and all of that. Looking to see if there is at all a motion request to accept the presentation, is to accept the presentation and the information. Doesn't restrict, doesn't go restrictive any further down, or doesn't restrict any other further conversations, but looking for that, if that's the pleasure of the board. I see your light, Trustee Church.
I just want, we've been down this road before. If we accept the report, it doesn't mean I agree with everything in there, it just means we accept on the record the report, is what my understanding.
I believe so, but let's get some clarity, counsel.
No, if you accept the report, there's case law that says it's, you're accepting the report, not just a physical acceptance, but you're accepting the contents therein.
That means we're accepting the content of the report. Did you get that, Trustee Church?
So how would we accept the report without accepting the report?
I don't know that we can. It doesn't, yeah, I don't know that you can say, we accept it, but we don't accept it, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't seem like that's something we can do, right?
What I'm saying, I've just, excellent report, I agree with most, I don't want to get myself in a corner with a percent. I agree with most everything in there. I put some things on there that weren't on the record, that weren't in there, but I brought up different issues. So I just don't want to get painted into a corner that I agreed with everything in there, or if I vote yes, and I don't want to vote no and be seen as the naysayer. So I'm just curious about how we do that.
I don't know if there's a middle ground in there unless you want to pull out something specifically, I guess, if that guess will be appropriate. I'm looking at you, counsel.
I think you can just say, I'm going to move to approve the report with the exceptions to the comments I've already made, and that would be it.
Did that help you, Trustee Church? That's the way you can, you can move to accept what you accepted, and then if there were comments that you made that were contrary to what was reported.
I think I can do this in a manner that would make everybody happy, at least I'll try. I would, this is a draft in my brain, I would move to accept the report, understanding that there may be differences of opinion involved in some of the statistics, which doesn't mean just me, other people haven't spoken up, but that doesn't mean they agree or disagree with everything. But how, maybe for discussion, how does that sound?
Asking for me to feed back from others, how does that look? How does that look, kind of counsel?
Can you read it back, JJ?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the report with the understanding that it does not denote that all trustees agree 100% with the contents.
Okay, that, you think that's legal? Can you, I don't, let's have Jay, can you repeat it, Trustee Church, or should we have JJ repeat it?
JJ, and then add, agree or disagree.
Oh, JJ shaking her head, she's really good, she catches it most of the time, so give it a shot, Trustee Church.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the report with the understanding that it does not necessarily denote that trustees agree or disagree with the entire contents.
Okay, and that's a legal motion, trustee? Sounds like that's illegal. So basically it would be, yes, accepting the report and acknowledging that not all trustees are in full agreement.
May or may not be.
Yeah, just acknowledging that, not all. It's your motion, so whatever you want to say.
Yeah, I think I said it, yeah.
Want to give it back to us, JJ? So this is not a draft in your head, this is a real motion, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Motion is that the Board of Trustees accepts the report with the understanding that not all trustees may agree or disagree with the entire contents of the report.
Does that capture it?
Perfect.
Okay, that there is a motion on the floor, looking for a second.
Second.
Trustee Rodriguez, there is a second, let's have discussion. If there needs to be any discussion, doesn't look like there needs to be any discussion. So this is a motion that says we accept the report and acknowledge, I'm paraphrasing now, and acknowledge that not all the trustees are in agreement or disagreement of the contents therein, that's what we're saying. Okay? Everybody's good? Okay, let's go ahead and let's take a shot at a vote here. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion carries six to zero. Okay? All right. All right, now we'll move on to, this is our general public comment period. We'll do this and then trustees will have a lunch break before our meeting. General public, thank you staff, I shouldn't do that, I shouldn't just, thank you staff and thank you for those who came to be a part, those of you who have worked on this for all these years, that have allowed us to build and repair schools, the repair and renovation and upkeep, certainly very, very important. Okay, now we're going to go to our general public comment period. Remember, general public comment, that means we will not be talking about the capital improvement program and all, and again, as a reminder, the Nevada open meeting law, as indicated on your card, allows us to restrict comments in the general public comment period that are willfully disruptive, that are irrelevant, that are repetitious, that are slanderous, that are offensive, that are inflammatory, that are irrational, that are amounting to personal attacks, or interfering with the rights of other speakers. Okay, again, clearly spelled out on the public comment cards, and I'm just going to ask everyone if you would, please, 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 if you would, let's get through this together. We're glad you're here, we do want to hear your comments, and let's just make sure that we're in accordance with the open meeting law. And again, I'm going to remind you, if you would, I don't, I get no pleasure whatsoever in interrupting anybody. So please, if you keep your mask on or your shield down, and I'll try to throw you some hints if it starts to slip, so I don't have to interrupt you. I try to, I try to throw hints, I don't have to interrupt you. But it's just really important that we, that we're in adherence with Directive 048 from the Governor's Office, so. That being said, JJ?
Valerie Fianaca.
Ms. Fianaca, welcome back.
Thank you. I, I'm usually a very friendly person, but today I'd like to call for the business of the board to be halted until the legality of the votes taken by Trustee Calvert are determined to be legal. Of greatest interest is, or significance is the vote which installed Mr. Rodriguez to District C. Mr. Rodriguez is a fine gentleman, I personally really like him, but I believe the evidence will show his seat was not obtained legally because Trustee Calvert's vote was illegitimate. This seat was won by only one vote separating Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. McCaffrey. Secondly, I would like to address you, President Taylor, I appreciate you taking your time to answer my email, you're the only person that did. I would like to point out that unlike me, an employer in Washoe County, Washoe County School District is not a business. Jeff is not your employee. He is employed by we, the people, as are every one of you on the board. You should all be representing the people in your districts and looking out for how the money is spent and that our children are well-educated with that money. I was sitting next to a gentleman in the audience who showed absolute contempt for Mr. Church while he was speaking, and he's, he's an employee of the district. I find that highly offensive. I'm very frustrated that there is nobody willing to step up and take responsibility for this debacle with Ms. Calvert. I had to contact the district attorney and then threaten to contact the sheriff before she finally resigned the next day. This is not right. There is little accountability. What did you and Mr. Robardo know and when did you know it? You can't throw an HR assistant under the bus and expect that all of this is going to go away. Business needs to stop until the validity of Mr. Rodriguez's seat is confirmed by the legal department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca. I'm going to just, I'm just going to state this for the record, we've, and I've said this publicly as well, we've asked legal counsel to look into Nevada state law and statutes surrounding that unusual circumstance, and I will say again, on the record, there is not a shred of fact or evidence that indicates that there was any prior knowledge of the residency status of Trustee Calvert. It's important to state that for the record, so the record doesn't reflect otherwise.
Hope Backman.
Ms. Backman, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. My name's Hope Backman and thank you for having me here today. I just want to point out that I have been pretty vocal about my displeasures with the school district, and since I have started doing that, I have been targeted at Jesse Beck Elementary School by Kristen McNeil and Principal Erin Lane. At eight o'clock in the morning, I had a police officer right here banging on my kitchen window and left this card on my car after fabricating a big lie that I didn't do. Luckily, I have it all on voice recording, so that's good. Did each and every one of you get the papers that I brought for you today? Did everyone get the papers that I brought today? Ms. McNeil, did you get the papers I brought today?
Remember, we're not going to do any personal attacks, okay?
All right, I've got one more thing.
The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. This means that the person involved should have legal capacity to give consent, should be so situated as to be able to exercise free power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, overreaching, or other ulterior form of constraint or coercion, and should have sufficient knowledge and comprehension of the elements of the subject matter involved as to enable him to make an understanding and enlightened decision. This latter element requires that before the acceptance of an affirmative decision by the experimental subject, there should be made known to him the nature, duration, and purpose of the experiment, the method and means by which it is to be conducted, all inconveniences and hazards reasonably to be expected, and the effects upon his health or person which may possibly come from his participation in the experiment.
That is number one in the Nuremberg Code. We've all made it very clear that we don't want our children in masks. The children have made it clear that they don't want to be in masks. The parents have made it clear that we do not want to be in masks at these meetings, yet you continuously force us to wear masks. Also, as I mentioned earlier, these things that you're doing, making up stories and things that aren't true, will go to court. Violating the Nuremberg Code, which is a video, a little clip that I just played for you, is punishable by death. And all of you are breaking those rules, especially number one. There's 10 items under the Nuremberg Code, and all of you are breaking those. Lastly, Lastly, we do not want Jeff Church to go anywhere. He's the only one up here that we respect or trust. We do not want him to go anywhere. As parents, we want Jeff Church to stay, and we would ask all the rest of you to resign, please. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Bachman.
Roger Edwards.
Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Well, good afternoon. Roger Edwards, for the record, 48-year resident. Been around here. My first school board meeting was November of 1974, just for reference. You know, welcome to, I want to thank all you guys. I've been a volunteer on many of these boards and commissions, and volunteers are just that, okay? But unfortunately, I know you guys all had to sign an agreement saying that you would follow board policy. You know, there's 116 board policies as of yesterday morning, and a lot of that's just for the public's edifice. 116. And a lot of the little things inside those, that you guys have responsibility to follow, I don't know how you would ever do all 116 of them. But you know, if we're going to start holding some trustees to the fine print and the policies, then we're going to hold everybody to it. You know, the trustees are public representatives, and it's a public board, so you have responsibilities, and they're laid out in those policy paperwork. And, but like, one of them, for instance, says trustees are responsible to understand the policies. That's, you're probably in violation of that without, you know, doing it definitively on your own. That's 9055. One of your restraints or requirements is to ensure the president, whoever that happens to be, keeps meetings concise and clear, and encourages discussion amongst the board members. That's Policy 9081. You're supposed to be monitoring the superintendent's daily operation and succession planning. Are you doing that? I've been at lots of meetings, and I've never heard one bit about that. That's Policy 9082. The president is supposed to be ensuring concise meetings, trustee discussion, and so forth. That's Board Policy 9115. And I can go on. You've got 116 of them. Only the last about 25% deal with the board requirements, trustee requirements, president requirements, superintendent requirements, and so forth. 25% is still a whole bunch, and just the functioning of what this group does right here. And I also want to, we have a whole bunch of people in this audience that are willing to bring up violations of each one of those or any of those, and you really don't want us stopping all of your operations because of it.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Casey Rogers. Have you said Casey Rogers?
I'm sorry, is it Rogers?
Rogers, Casey Rogers for the record.
Thank you. Welcome.
The American Medical Association instructs doctors to deceive. The guide lists nine key messages. The AMA wants doctors to focus on when communicating about COVID-19. This includes stressing the importance of eliminating non-medical vaccine exemptions, the importance of flu vaccines and COVID shots, and expressing confidence in vaccine development. In the guide, the AMA instructs doctors on how to inform the public using psychological and linguistic tools. This includes explicit instructions on which words to swap for other more narrative-affirming choices. Word swaps include changing hospitalization rates to deaths, two terms that are not even remotely interchangeable. For your information, less than 18% of doctors belong to the AMA. Why? Because it is a political organization, not a medical organization. Next statement.
Can you pull that mask up a little bit, Ms. Rogers, please?
We've spent decades working for students and educators, but there's still more to do. Like our progress during the civil rights and women's rights movements, we need to dig in, speak up for students and educators who are still facing inequality every day. Where did this statement come from? The NEA. This is not an educational organization. They are primarily a political organization. The Washoe County Board, what are you? I already know the answer. A political organization that doesn't allow freedom of speech.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Again, you know how we do this. Just if you can keep the applause to a minimum, that would be great.
Bev Stengem.
Welcome, Ms. Stengem. No, Ms., it's Beth Stengem. Okay, she, okay. Thank you.
Kathy Reyes.
Welcome, Ms. Reyes.
Good morning. Thank you, Kathy Kennedy Reyes, for the record, and for the men and women in blue, thank you. You're appreciated for protecting us. We appreciate you guys, and we don't need to defund you. We need to fund you and give you pay increases. So with that being said, on behalf of Trustee Church, I'm here today. Getting that letter for the allegations that were alleged for his incompetency, may I remind you, several years ago, and I called it before it happened, the Board was in violation, and you guys had to pay out money at the taxpayers' expense. Now you've imposed allegations, but with the Reno Gazette today, what is it? Yeah, because I don't even get it anymore. But it says here that you might be in violation of the, what is it? I didn't bring my reading glasses. Glasses, shame on me. I'm trying to look. But in violation of the open meeting law. So as far as competency goes, who dropped the ball on that? So if you want to talk about incompetency, as Roger says, just about every one of you guys have probably committed a violation, so we could hold you all on that. Some people probably should be recalled for their violations or their lack of competency. And at the taxpayers' expense, we don't need another lawsuit. Now, from sitting in here today, it seems like Trustee Smith and Trustee Church was the only one that did their homework on the Capitol projects. They had some valid questions. So what are the rest of you guys doing? You know, those are our dollars.
No personal attacks, okay?
Those are, there wasn't a personal attack. Personal attack? Is it, what are you, the others? You're on the Board. You represent us. You speak on our behalf. So what are you doing? You're speaking on our behalf. Why aren't you asking questions? Why aren't you doing homework? So my point being, what about the competency on that? So I've come to several meetings, and Trustee Church has brought questions. You may not like the questions he's asking, but he's speaking on behalf of the people that voted him in. So as far as the rest of you go, I'm sure there could be violations you could be brought up on. So if you don't go along to get along, then I guess you stand out, and Trustee Church stands out, speaking on behalf of his constituents that voted him in. So again, I don't want another lawsuit, so hopefully you get this right, because you already made a mistake on one trustee, and with that trustee, yeah, throwing an HR person under the bus, but you had to know.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes.
Jan Pantone.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I mean, just your last name now?
Pantone.
Pantone. Thank you. Pull the mic down a little bit, so we can hear you better. We can hear you well. Thank you, Ms. Pantone.
I'd just like to say Jeff Church is a retired Reno Police Sergeant and United States Air Force Lieutenant Colonel. He supports the United States Constitution and is a patriot. He holds two college degrees and numerous other accomplishments. Jeff Church is a longstanding community advocate, and his focus as a team member is building on the improvement of student success while considering the financial wishes of taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer. He is passionate about addressing the needs for at-risk children, and as a Spanish speaker, his hopes were to engage the Spanish-speaking community. Trustee Church welcomes constituent feedback, which is something I don't gather from this Board. Jeff supports education, not CRT, masks, and gender-neutral toilets. I believe those are the priorities of the Board, not so much education. In the past, the parents and community assumed, and we all know what that means, that their children were getting an education, but now they're realizing what is really going on. Students are no longer learning reading, writing, writing for sure, math, science, and history, but a socialist agenda. Dumbing down the education system brings uneducated people who would lack the tools to think critically, to analyze arguments logically, and to apply the lessons of history to the problems of today. That makes them the ideal electorate for a group that doesn't want anyone to realize the long-term consequences of what it's doing today. While this Board is trying to wrongfully discredit Jeff Church, this Board ignored the rant of Kristen McNeil by sending out on Washoe County School District media her personal political views, and Jacqueline Calvert's moving, not divulging when she moved, into another district. So I guess my question, which you can't answer, is, is this a secret society or a board of trustees? This Board needs to go. We need people who care about our kids, like Jeff Church, and believe me, we're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pantone. Once again, if we can, no, no, you're fine. Thank you, Ms. Pantone. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm just going to ask, I'm just going to ask everyone, if you would, I'm just going to ask, please don't, please don't disrupt the meeting, Mr. Edwards, please. I'm going to ask everyone, if you would, to refrain from applause, I ask this every meeting across the board, regardless of what issue you're speaking on, or what it is that you share. So I just appreciate that. Thank you very much.
James Benton.
Mr. Benton, now's your turn. Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mr. Benton.
James M. Benton, for the record. I'm here to urge this Board to stop the COVID mandates, masks, et cetera, and to support Jeff Church and oppose any censure. I want to cite David Robson. Quote, "There is an easy route, oh, there is no easy route through a crisis. A wrong move could erode trust and unleash unrest that exasperates the existing dangers. But it remains to be seen whether our leaders will rise to the occasion with the appropriate response." I want to cite brightdean.com/41977481, a discussion on COVID. If I get vaccinated, can I stop wearing a mask? CDC, no. If I get vaccinated, will I be resistant to COVID? CDC, probably not. If I get vaccinated, I won't be contagious to others, right? No. The vaccine doesn't stop transmission. If I get vaccinated, how long will the vaccine last? CDC, no one knows, because it is still in its experimental phases. If I get vaccinated, can I stop social distancing? No. So then, what is the advantage of getting the vaccine? Hoping the virus won't kill you. Are you sure the vaccine won't injure or kill me? No guarantees. If statistically the virus has a 99.97 survival rate, why should I get vaccinated? It appears that there's an all-out war effort against Trustee Church that is misdirected. This war effort should be directed at the quality of education. In 2013, the average ACT score was 22. Since then, there's been a trajectory, a downward trajectory, and what will it be this year? What will the results be? If this would be a one-time decrease, it could be explained, but this is a steady trajectory of lower ACT scores. Jeff supports a quality of education committee. Committee is needed to analyze the lack of academic progress in the school district and come up with results. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Okay, you know what? One more time, or we're just going to have to recess the meeting. Let's just get through this together, you guys, okay? Just get through this together. It's just not that hard.
Bruce Parks.
Welcome, Mr. Parks.
Thank you. For the record, Bruce Parks, once again, here to give you all the civics lesson. Thomas Jefferson said, "I know of no safer repository for power than the people themselves." Now, what that means is, we, the people, are the ultimate authority in this country, in this state, and in this county, and whether you choose to believe it or accept it or not, in this room. We, the people, are the ultimate authority. I believe that this action against Jeff Church is retaliation for what happened with Jackie Calvert. Well, I'm here today to tell you that if you want to retaliate against anybody, bring it. Retaliate against me. I'm the one that uncovered the information. I'm the one that came to you with it, and you did nothing. But you're not alone in that. I took it to other people, and they did nothing. Until finally, I had no choice but to go to somebody that would do something about it. And now, the result is, she's no longer here. Did the rest of the Board know that the president of the Board had been informed that Jackie Calvert doesn't live in the district she's supposed to represent? Has she disclosed that? Has she disclosed that to all y'all? Along with General Counsel, he had previous knowledge also. That's okay. You were informed. You had a chance. I didn't have any choice. I had to go public. Didn't want to do that. You forced my hand. But we're not done with this. Make no mistake, we are not done. Jackie Calvert defrauded the Washoe County taxpayers out of pay and benefits she was not entitled to. The question is, is there culpability in her commission of a crime to defraud the taxpayers by anybody here today? That might be something that, I don't know, Bar Association, or maybe the Attorney General's Office? We don't know yet. The fact of the matter is, we want our money back. We want the people to know that transparency is important to us. We want you to start acting like the representatives that you are supposed to be. And again, you want to retaliate against anybody? Retaliate against me. I'm the one that uncovered this stuff. I'm the one that brought it to the forefront, and I gave you guys the opportunity. I had to do what I had to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Once again, I'm going to say, no, I'm going to correct the record on this one. Mr. Parks is absolutely correct. He sent me an email on September 8th with the detailed information from about a former Trustee Calvert. I phoned former Trustee Calvert on September 9th, said we needed to get this resolved before the next board meeting. Two working days later, she resigned. That's the record. The record is corrected. There is not a shred of anything else out there that says anything else other than that. That is the record.
I have the next.
Who's next? As do I. I have the emails. I have the emails.
Jeanne Quintana.
Hi, thank you for listening to me, and I just wanted to say, I'm here to support Jeff. He is someone that represents us as constituents, and we voted for him for things that we thought he would take care of. He has integrity. He's served his country. He's served our county here, and every time I come to one of these meetings, it reminds me why I didn't send my kids to public school. And I'm thankful. It was a poor private school, but, I mean, I'm sure a lot of you have good intentions, but really, the feeling I get is, there's not enough caring for the children. It's more a bunch of just on-and-on bureaucracy. And being in a private school setting, there's much higher standards, even with less money. And it's just unfathomable, the amount of time and waste and on and on, and red tape and bureaucracy. Anyway, I would just hope you could improve and care about children, not your salaries, and we support Jeff Church, and I think that's the majority of us in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. I believe it was Ms. Quintana.
Debbie Hudgens.
Was it Ms. Quintana? The trustee... Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Hudgens?
Yes.
Welcome back.
Gabby Hudgens, thank you. So, the amount of time that all of you have to spend listening to our public comments and the representation that we bring to this room, it just seems to fall on deaf ears time after time, and I feel like that none of the issues that we bring up are even acknowledged or addressed, and I really don't understand it. I saw the total disrespect for Holly when she asked a simple question, and it was not even answered. I mean, one person, Mr. Rodriguez, acknowledged her question, and everybody else just stared at her. I mean, it would just have been common courtesy, and it makes us feel very violated that we don't... that you're not hearing what we say. The people in this room represent hundreds. It's not just the people in this room. People are working. They can't come to these meetings. We are a small fraction of the people that believe like we do and care about what we care about. I feel you are elected people, and you can be sure, we will be working hard to let the people in your districts know how you voted, what you voted on. This is not what you call a success, when our students are failing. They should be number one. They're not, because we see what's happening. The scores are going down. The quality of the education here is abominable. So, there's no accountability, except when we go to the polls, and it will, because we are uniting. You can believe, hundreds, hundreds of us are ready to go to work to make sure the next election makes a difference. And I just want to address the fact that Jackie Calvert had to have submitted a change of address, and I'm sure that that was the HR thing that has been mentioned. And it's really hard to believe that this small group that you are, that no one knew. Jeff Church, I'm here to support him. He represents the views of the people in his constituency, and he will remain foremost in our minds when we go to the polls. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hudgens. One thing I would say, if you... Could you just work with me on the applause? I just don't understand why that's so tough. You just work... That's a respect thing as well. It is, because those are the rules. What I was gonna say is, what I was going to say, you referred to her name as Holly. I don't remember her last name, but I should have addressed that. We all got our handouts. You're absolutely right, and I apologize. I should have addressed that when she asked. We all got that, so you're right. I apologize for that.
Fred Simon.
Dr. Simon, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm definitely gonna change what I was gonna talk about. It's pretty appalling to see the arrogance of you people and the way you treat the citizens, especially Superintendent McNeil.
No personal attacks, please.
I'm not on a personal attack. It's a fact.
Thank you, sir.
She was arrogant, and she has been in the past, and there's no necessity to that, Ms. Taylor, and you have to stop trying to control people. Last time I was here, you endangered Kristin McNeil.
Mr. Simon, I'm gonna ask you... Mr. Simon, I'm going to ask you...
Stop my talking.
Okay. You know what? We're gonna go to recess.
Be respectful, no chanting, no, you know, please, just let's get through this. But let's follow the rules of decorum. It makes everybody look bad if we don't. And I understand the frustrations, and I understand the frustration on the clapping. And I understand you don't know how loud the person next to you is going to clap, and it comes out as being loud. But try to do a golf clap if that's appropriate. And maybe if I can, could legal maybe explain, kind of give us some guidance on that? Because it is confusing, and I've dealt with it before. But again, please, folks, be respectful, no chanting, no interrupting, and let's just follow the rules of decorum.
I appreciate that, Trustee Church. I'm going to do two things. First of all, I'm just going to ask everyone if you please put your mask back on. Again, I don't like to wear a mask either, but we know, we just want to follow the rules. If you would, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll ask that too. I wear mine, so let's do the masks.
Thank you, Trustee Church. This is for all. It's the ability to come and do public comment is absolutely your right. It's not a right that I would ever, nor any of trustees, I don't think would ever try, would ever even think to deny. But we're not going to yell at, we aren't going to be treated disrespectfully. Voices raised. We don't have to communicate in that way. I know that there are some frustrations. Obviously, you got to know that we have some frustrations too. It'd be great if we can kind of get together and work through all some of that, you know. But it's, we cannot interchange this way because it's not going to get anything, it's not going to get anybody anywhere. I will say from an applause standpoint, the important thing on applause is to be consistent in whichever way we allow or disallow and so on. And I've tried to be consistent for, really, really focused on it for the last five or six months in particular. If you do a little golf clap, that's fine. But when it gets to be disruptive, then I'm going to have to ask you not to. And it's been disruptive, and it's carried, it's been long, it's carried over into JJ reading the next name. That name has not been able to be heard. And it's the same every single meeting. That's truly what I endeavor to do on any side. Personal attacks not on any side. I defended, kept someone from doing the personal check on Trustee Church last meeting. Any side. That's not okay. That's not okay. So if we can work together to get through it, we will be here as long as you want to have public comment. I think we've proven that. So I'm going to ask you to do that as well. Dr. Simon? Dr. Simon?
Is that his time?
Dr. Simon, I'm sorry, we don't get to yell. That's not, we don't get to yell that way. I understand that he will continue from where he left off. That's what, because everybody gets three minutes in public comment. Otherwise, he gets more than three minutes. Dr. Simon, at this time, if you would, sir, please go ahead.
You know, I think this would be a much more civil meeting if you had respect on your side, which you don't. You just simply sit there and say you do, but you don't. Clapping is not disruptive.
If we cannot have a public, if we cannot have a personal attack.
I'm not having a personal attack. I said you all.
Dr. Simon?
Ms. Taylor, I have a right by the U.S. federal constitution to speak my mind.
Stop it. Order, 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 order.
You're trying to censor me.
Stop, stop, order. Okay, you will get your time on the clock. Okay, we all know that yelling out is not appropriate.
I'm not yelling.
As I said before, if rules are going to be broken, I'm going to ask and just remind you not to. I try not to do it in a loud way. I try to do it when there's a pause. And we've done this a couple of times, Dr. Simon. So if you would, you'll get two minutes and 15 seconds. We will start this thing all over again from where we started after the recess. Okay?
Do I have a right to my opinion?
Will you please, okay, one more interruption, and I have to ask you to leave. Okay, we just want to get through this. I'm only going to interrupt if the rules are broken. I've said that before. I get no pleasure in interrupting anybody at all. It's going to be your time. We're going to go back to 2:15.
I have a question. I don't want you to yell at me for disrupting you.
No, before.
I have a question. What rules are you talking about?
Your time, Dr. Simon, your time is the.
What rules are you, what rules am I violating?
Dr. Simon.
Ms. Taylor, I'm asking you, telling me I'm violating rules. I'm asking professionally and nicely, what rules am I violating?
We're going to go to two minutes and 15 seconds. That was not directed at you, Dr. Simon. Okay, we will have no personal attacks, and I've said that before. Two minutes and 15 seconds. Let's see if we can get through this. Go ahead.
You know, I'm making a general statement about the behavior of the board at times because it's not supposed to be a personal attack. The anger and the frustration of these people who come to this meeting, and Ms. Nicolect doesn't think I should be here because I'm not from this county and I don't have anybody in this school, excuse me, don't interrupt me. Follow the rules. The bottom line here is, I was at another county meeting, and it is allowable for board members to interact if they want, but you don't want to. And so there are rules that you subjectively decide to invoke that really aren't objectively there. And clapping, the whole time I've been here, the last three or four meetings, isn't disrupting anything. It's just irritating you because you personally don't want it. And the whole point is, is that these people care about what's going on here. And you people sit up on your throne here, and you are citizens, and you will go back to being citizens, and you act very pompous that you don't want to listen. And the superintendent who's sitting there writes 90% of the time when people are talking and not paying attention. And people talk about it, and they go, there's no concern. There are issues here, and that's all we're trying to get involved in. You people don't come here educated on agenda and topics. That's a responsibility to make sure from the superintendent. Problem with Jeff is, he comes with so much information that you don't like it. Jeff, you know, you've got a problem. Whiteness is not unnecessarily a negative, but it certainly can be. Being an old guy isn't necessarily a negative, but it certainly can be. Being a conservative is not necessarily a negative, but it can be. You know what? If you want to take away his freedom of speech and you censure him, you will all be indicted.
Thank you, Dr. Simon. Who's next, JJ? Okay.
Dee Anderson.
Welcome, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
And if she's, just for the record, if she says she'll make sure, she will make copies, we will all get it.
No, I made copies.
Oh, you made copies, okay. She'll make sure we get them. And pull the mic down a little bit so we can hear you better.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Uh huh, go ahead.
Okay, before I proceed with my findings, I'd like to ask the board, and I think you do, are you committed to your role of responsible financial stewardship as described in Board Policy 9400? Does this board recognize the importance of being data and results-driven related to student academic achievement as the number-one policy cited in Board Policy 9215? Are you following the guiding principles of Board Policy 9110? I would beg you to read each and every one of them. Due to my time limitations, I'm going to briefly compare only two of the 11 offices over which this Board of Trustees provides oversight. They're headed by the Chief Academic Officer and the Chief Strategies Officer. For fiscal years 2020 through 2022, the Chief Academic Officer's budget decreased by over $10 million. This office is arguably the number-one priority for any school district as it is responsible for leading and supporting the district's instructional support departments. For the past two fiscal years, the Chief Strategies Officer's budget For a longer-term perspective, from 2015 to 2022, a period of seven years, the budget for academics has decreased by over $4 million. The budget for the Office of Strategies has increased by more than $11.5 million. All of this data was taken from the Data Gallery. This period of time roughly coincides with the Board's adoption of Board Policy 9210. Having seen no improvement in any achievement gaps in this period of time, I would have to conclude that your strategies are not working and that perhaps this board should be censured for violations related to multiple board policies. And a final note, when a school board starts focusing on things they were not tasked to do, they lose sight of the things they are supposed to do and that we rely on them exclusively to do. If I have time, I just want to add that I felt the bristling of every Washoe County School District employee when there were questions regarding the presentation earlier today. And I find that astounding as a former, oop, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Ma'am, is that your phone? Oh, here we go. Here's your phone.
No, it's not mine.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it might be Fred's.
All right.
Well, we just give it to JJ, yeah. And if anyone knows him and that, then we may be able to.
Okay.
Give that something. Welcome, Mr. Duran.
Hello, how you doing? So, as you know, I wear suits. I don't merely wear a suit, but I do, I have to wear a suit because business, so. So, and I'm, was, and am a business major, so. So, I want to give out the best of market advice for these people. So, here we go. I give you three messages, three words. Don't get vaccinated. Follow our website at willmorefoodhome.com. Take it. Now, back to you, board. So, we know, we do know that Justice Keller has resigned. He did violate a board policy for curtailation. When a, when a school board member or public official who moved out of the district or state or county or country, whatever, and move out of the state, that created a huge problem and should not be a representative. Representatives such like Josh Hawley, he moved, he got elected in 2018. He moved to Virginia. Now, he could have lived in Virginia. He could represent in Missouri. I'm not sure he got elected, but he really sent some work, so. So, how about, I'm not here for support or support of Jeff Church. That's too early for me because I just sent you an email. And I will tell you, I will tell you that maybe I try more, find more areas to, whether if I do support or propose censorship of Jeff Church. And also, I do, I, sometimes I do censor a lot as Hispanic minorities, low people of color. As people of color, I do censor a lot by zoning community meaning, I mean, science, censor, you know, whatever. So, that's pretty normal to me because we got First Amendment of free speech, but there are the limit of free speech, and maybe it's gray or not, but them, so. So, I want to say, keep up the good work. We want to make sure we have a good moral character. I will, and also, also, you see Fred out there said, let him know that you forgot his phone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. Welcome, Ms. Meyer.
I'm not even sure what to say. Victoria Meyer here. This is, so regarding Jacqueline Calvert, whether there was knowledge of her residency or not, there should have been by Angie Taylor and Kristen McDeal as part of your fiduciary responsibilities. You do have a legal obligation to the people that you purportedly serve to understand these things. Another fiduciary responsibility is to our students, their education. That's first and foremost. And as a lot of people have already said, we rank lowest in the nation, just trying to understand why you guys are focusing on the things you're focusing on, like segregating the unvaccinated students. There's so much medical information available now about this. It's just gone beyond the pale that you don't understand what's going on in terms of the science. And more vaccinated people in Israel than any other country, yet they have the highest pace rate. So, what's going on here? You know, why are we doing this? So, next, we're going to move into vaccine passports, which they have in Israel and in New York City and San Francisco. And do you understand the ramifications? Do you care? I hope you do. I really do. As fellow citizens, you know, citizens of the United States of America with the Constitution and a Bill of Rights, vaccine passports in Israel are becoming anything passports. So, it can be revoked. So, your ability to participate in daily life can be revoked if you don't get the booster, if you don't get 10 boosters, if you don't get the flu shot, if you don't wear your mask. This is coming for all of you. I don't think you'll be exempt from that. And then moving into, if you don't social distance, if you don't eat the right foods, it's all tied to the vaccine passport. You should read about that kind of stuff. It's going on in Israel. They are pushing past just having the vaccine and revoking passports if you don't get the booster. And then it's going to be the next step and the next step. And it's going to come here to Washoe County, and we fully expect that you people will inform yourselves as citizens, as fellow citizens, not as board members, as fellow citizens and as board members, to not impose this, to stand up to it, to have a backbone and stand up to it. Don't let your political aspirations that we know you have, two of you for sure, don't let that stand in the way of doing the right thing for civil liberties.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Welcome, Ms. Snedliger. I think I messed that up like last night.
Snediger.
Snediger. Excuse me, thank you. Welcome, ma'am.
My name is Catherine Snediger. I'm a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman, which means I'm not a legal fiction, unlike you who are a corporation. That's how you were created, this board, was as a corporation. As far as these masks goes, I took this off your box of alleged surgical masks that are outside. Let me get this pointed up here. It's a rotating thing. And it says, "Warning: This mask will not protect you from viruses or disease." This mask won't protect me from that. Here's a mask. You see that brown on there? That's cigarette smoke. If cigarette smoke can get through this mask, which is a bigger particle than the COVID, the COVID is going to go right through it, if there even is a COVID. I think it's the flu. There's been a lot of studies that says it's the flu. But forcing people to wear a mask that does not work, that does not protect you, why do you do it? It says right on the box out there. Why do you insist? You don't get to give me medical advice by forcing me to wear a mask. You're not my doctor.
Thank you.
You're not my doctor. You're not my spouse. You're not my boss. You don't get to tell me what to do. I am not a statutory citizen. I am not a person under the law. I have declared that over and over and over at all my meetings. And you know what? If you want to come after me, you better show me a person that I have infected and what their damages are. Because if you can't show that, you have no cause against me. You people are a corporation of the Washoe County School District.
Can you pull that up now?
What?
I think, can you, I'm trying not to.
Oh, god dang it. Will you shut the hell up about that?
Okay.
Damn!
I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
Yeah, we've been voluntarily from you.
Thank you. Who's next, JJ?
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. This is our work session. We're done. We'll have a break, and then we will start, we only have, we have a very short period of time before we start the board meeting at 2:00.
2:30.
Yeah, we have, we have, we'll be right here at 2:00 for our regular board meeting. Thank you.